And so I think we can just get started and hopefully the mayor will be there in a few minutes. All right, Maren, I'm going to let you keep letting people in. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote to begin this meeting. Lori.
Lori Garcia here.
Maren.
Maren Goldstein here.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham here.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt here.
And Cynthia Kuzinski here. Welcome to our school committee meeting. Before we really open this up too much, I want to read a brief announcement from Marissa. Just so anybody who doesn't know Marissa knows, she is an incredible member of our school committee. She is very dedicated and does all her research and is very supportive of everybody. Unfortunately, on Tuesday, she lost power and they're still working on power at her house. And everything else is going on, so she cannot make it tonight. And I had intermittently was able to talk to her by phone. And she is really disappointed that she cannot do it. She did have enough power to send me a quick letter that she would like read. So I'm going to read this, but we will miss her and we will carry on without her. Dear East Hampton community, I am a member of our East Hampton School Committee now in my third term. And I've been so honored to serve our city since January 2016. I am deeply remorseful to miss tonight's meeting. To be fully transparent, I have been struggling to be consistently available to the rapidly heightened demands and unpredictability of this critically important position. I'm a working mother of two children, including a preschooler. My partner struggles with severe chronic health challenges. Due to the pandemic, the resources that I would ordinarily rely upon for childcare coverage during evening meetings are far less available. I have always taken the responsibility of my school committee position very seriously during this intense period of evaluating the reopening plans. I have read every email, watched recordings of the forums that I could not attend, and have been doing my very best to attend as many live meetings as possible. But I am experiencing firsthand the way that the failure of our federal government to control this pandemic and to protect our institutions is pushing people, including and disproportionately mothers of young children out of participation in public life. Tonight, I find myself unable to balance my commitment to our city with the immediacy of familial demands. I sincerely apologize for the deficiencies in my service at this difficult time. I take comfort in my faith in my wonderful colleagues on this committee as they are all thoughtful and capable stewards of our public school system and our city's best interest. And I did tell her over and over that she has not failed us. Life happens and we miss her and we will see her as soon as we can. So she apologizes and we will go on. So I'm sure there are a number of people who would like to speak. I'm going to ask two minutes each, just so that we can continue on with our business. We have read your emails to us, so some of you may feel like you don't have to speak tonight. But certainly you are welcome to speak and then we will get on with the rest of the meeting. So I'm going to ask that you do one of two things. Either you use the hand signal for raising your hand that you would like to talk, or you put it in the chat that you you would like to speak. And if we are okay with sound and everybody can hear each other, you don't have to turn your video off, but at some point I may ask you to turn just your video off to improve our sound. Okay, Shannon?
I just wanted to.
Okay, we might.
The mayor's called in?
Great, great. So we may have to, because I just heard you all trippy sounding. We may have to all be turning off our video if you are not a school committee team member or are not speaking. Now, the first person up for speaking tonight for public speak is Nellie Taylor.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nellie Taylor. I am a parent of an eight-year-old at Ryan Road School in North Hampton, or I live in Florence. I am a math teacher at East Hampton High School. I've been teaching there since 2008. And I am the president of the East Hampton Education Association. In addition to that, I also represent East Hampton and a lot of other districts in Western Mass on the MTA Board of Directors. So I, as you know, we're currently in negotiations with the school committee around the specifics regarding our return to learning amid the COVID pandemic. At the same time, the school committee tonight has an incredible choice to make about how the community will return to learning under these conditions. So given the governor's announcements today and the clear prudent trend in the region, both in pre-K-12 and in higher ed of return to a fully remote model, I am adding the position of our education association is to return to learning in a fully remote model initially. The students we or the schools that we have are not yet equipped with the appropriate HVAC equipment for a safe return to in-building learning. The East Hampton educators want to be back to face-to-face work with students. We are dying to see them. They are why we do this and we love working with them. We love supporting the community and we just can't do that safely yet. So I mean, nearly 50% of our EEA members who responded to the latest poll indicated that they either personally are or have a close family member who is in a high-risk group because of this disease. And I urge you to make choices tonight that will protect our members, protect our students, protect our entire community from needless exposure to COVID-19. I also am here to urge you to push back against DESI's rigid demands and directives around MCAS and attendance, because amidst this pandemic, there are going to be extreme challenges for families. And DESI's mandates around high-stakes testing and forcing students to undergo that process again and forcing educators to undergo that process in a year like this is out of hand. So my hope is that we can do everything we can in this community to trust educators, trust our expertise, trust our support staff to create and provide dynamic, innovative experiences for the students of East Hampton as we adjust our learning expectations to their experiences already and their experiences moving forward in the next school year. We have the expertise to do that. We have incredibly talented staff. And I urge you to give them the resources, give us the resources that we need to create appropriate learning experiences for students this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Maren, who do you see? I've been writing down names as I scroll through.
Don't you just go ahead.
Okay, Juliet Moore.
Hi, thank you. I'm a local parent of a, let's see, sixth grader and a second grader. And I know a lot has changed since Tuesday. Maybe it's for the better that the meeting got postponed, but I'm just hoping that everyone who has a say can just look at the recent, what's happened, you know, within the past couple of days as far as everyone, a lot of places pushing back to November and then maybe reassessing, this is the whole remote program. I know it's not feasible for everybody. Maybe, maybe something could happen, but I do support the whole full remote for not only the children, but the employees and teachers and everyone involved. I would just hate to see, you know, one student gets sick and then what do you do? I'm just nervous about, I'm nervous about that. But I know this is not easy and you guys have like such a hard job and I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. I just wanted to, I don't know, I'm trying, trying to bet my best to wrap my brain around this. I'm, uh, what, I had all these notes, but now, I don't know. Yeah, I guess, I guess, especially with today, the governor's notice of slowing things down and reopening and then cutting down, I think, public and private, I think, 50 people. So I don't know how you're going to do that with school. I don't know, but um, thank you. And yeah, so thanks for listening. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Next is Peter Marks.
Yes. Hello, good evening. So I am a, well, we actually, we are parents of a soon-to-be sixth grader and a soon-to-be ninth grader. And my point tonight is much more about the special education, where I feel like there has been very little information. We understand that with our sons' severe IP needs, that over the rest of the school year services, nobody was prepared. I'm hoping tonight from the school committee to hear what the, when you make your decision, what you plan it for kids with a lot of services on their IPs, because I feel like you have all these people talking about everything else from the regular learning. What about the kids who just like need support services to do this? And how will this work if it's all virtual? Because like I said, it didn't work for the last semester of school year for our family in particular. But I know many families with special needs kids were struggling. And I'm really hoping that whatever decision is made, that there is either like an extra exception rule made for kids with strong IPs, that there's some kind of services that will be rendered, or how the school committee plans on ensuring that you meet your legal obligations to ensure that those are actually met. Because at this point, like I said, they weren't met the last three months of the school year. And otherwise, I can only second that you have a tough decision to make. Our love is with you. I know there's, there's going to be people on both sides, so, but please consider the kids that have some special needs as well, please.
Thank you. Bonnie Atkins.
Great. Okay, got it. Hello. Our names are Bonnie Atkins and Alice Barber. We're here tonight as both parents of an incoming Whitebrook fifth grader and also a psychotherapist with specialties in trauma with both young children and teens with over 50 years of experience between us. I can't believe I'm saying that. Our caveat here, we desperately want our child to go back to school as it was, pre-pandemic. We want this because of concerns for our child's emotional well-being and due to the fact that we both work full-time and cannot devote as much time and energy that's needed to support our child's home-based education. We also recognize that all of you are in positions of making a decision that will please some, anger others. We are so appreciative of all that you are doing. We are both here today to strongly urge the East Hampton School Committee to vote unanimously for full remote learning for the coming school year and that teachers be able to work remotely from home. The truth of the matter is this, even if children return to school in person, it will not be the school of pre-pandemic time. What we truly want for our child and our family right now cannot happen, no matter which plan is adopted tonight. We must radically accept this fact. The physical health reasons for hybrid versus remote model have been discussed by others with much more knowledge than we have. We are bringing a mental health perspective.
Here are our reasons for those requests of this committee. The emotional trauma of this time on children, teachers, and families cannot be overstated. This is an ongoing global trauma. Returning to a classroom in which everyone is under stress will not help mitigate this trauma. In fact, while attempting to teach and learn, the brains of teachers and students will not be ready to do so. Many will be in states of fight, flight, freeze, and dissociation. Teaching and learning is not possible under those circumstances. If we want our children to maintain any semblance of emotional and academic health, we need to take care of our teachers. We actually need to tend to their stress first so that they may tend to our children, much like the oxygen mask directive in an airplane. This means allowing a remote teaching option for all of them. Two, the preventable death of a child's teacher or another child in their class has the very real possibility of traumatizing that child, not to mention the family of the teacher. Are we willing to sacrifice the life of even one of our teachers or administrators, paraprofessionals, food service staff, or maintenance staff in this time? What message is that sending to our children? We both have consulted to classrooms in which teachers have died mid-year. The primary question from the children in those classes, why does she have to die? We firmly believe that if we return to in-person school in any capacity, we will have to answer that question. And in that case, we will not be able to say it was an unfortunate accident. Children at some time will know that this was a death that was preventable and we, the adults in charge, did not prevent it. Teachers are writing their wills in anticipation of this school year. Three, periods of change are most stressful for humans, whether the change is perceived to be good or bad. If students were to enter the building this September, the period of acclimation for both children and staff to the in-person schedule, learning expectations, and health and safety rules will take weeks. Inevitably, then we will shut down completely and enter a new period of acclimation to new rules, new expectations. No in-depth learning will take place during this time. What we love dearly about the East Hampton Public Schools is a sense of community that is pervasive in every building. Please let us err on the side of physical safety, which is also ultimately on the side of emotional stability for our school staff and our children. Again, we appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Wannamaker.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alice Wannamaker. I'm an incoming senior ID stamped in high this year. Last week, I spoke to you all about the ways that older students can have a meaningful educational experience through virtual interaction with teachers. And today I would like to reiterate this point. I would like to ask that the school committee in this district does not give teams a choice between keeping their family safe and having their needs met. Having that option will lead either to guilt and risk or to grief and resentment. Instead, give us access to the teachers we love and trust virtually. Having that will help us make it through the challenges of a remote semester or year. I would also like to reiterate the point I made last week, that typical benchmarks do not exist this year. The entire world will be in a different place and only arbitrary government structures expect us children to have a typical year. I am genuinely excited about potentially taking virtual classes with my favorite teachers and best friends. That safe grounding experience is the best thing the school can offer students this year. Any risk or benchmark is not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Amoroso.
Hi, I am a parent of three children in the East Hampton school system. One is an incoming Whitebrook student in fifth grade. The other is going to be a third grader and my youngest is an incoming kindergartner. So I feel like this year is, has some extra stress, not only from our world environment, but also from my particular children, especially those who have IEP services. I often think of the time that we're living in as the era of no good choices. You know, every choice is going to be bad in some way. But I think that tonight, while you might not have good choices, I think you have a responsible choice. And though it will be difficult for many families, for many children, for, for parents, for teachers and their working conditions, I think that the responsible choice is to start remotely. I desperately want my children to be at school. They do better there, they see friends. It's altogether a much better experience, obviously. But it would be even more difficult to jerk them in and out of school to potentially have them or someone they know or some teacher that they know and trust and rely on become sick. And it just, I, like I said, no good choice, but a responsible choice. And I thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Anna Lawrence. Anna Lawrence. I can come back?
Sorry, I got stuck to my chair as I was rising. I'm a seventh grade English teacher and also the parent of a preschooler. I teach at Whitebrook. And I want to also add on to say that I want us to start remotely. I desperately want to see my students. I want to be in school with them. But my windowless classroom is not a safe place to be. And I don't know how to teach students if I'm scared of them. Additionally, I can do more exciting things remotely right now than I can do distance and masked in a classroom. Distance and masked, I don't know how to conference with students about writing and about their reading. I don't know how to have students work in small groups remotely. We can do that. We can do breakout rooms with Zoom. There are all sorts of programs that we can use and actually talk together in a way that while we would be physically together in the classroom, we would really be alone. So that's what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish Heed. Trish.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm trying to get unmuted here. Thanks. My name is Trish Heed. I live on Carolon Circle and my daughter will be a rising fifth grader this year. As most communities around us choose remote learning to start the school year, I am hopeful that this is where the committee will land this evening. As I follow the district plans for school reopening, one thing that seems to continue to confound much-needed progress has been the questions of what if? With so much still unknown about this virus, we can what if ourselves into paralysis? I would ask you rather to focus on now what can? So we can get on with the business of planning a successful remote model. What can we as community do to support our families for whom remote education will be an insurmountable obstacle? It's vital that we're able to provide robust equitable education to all the families in our district. What can we do to successfully identify all these families and students and continue to remain flexible as family situations change throughout the year? What can we do to support our teachers? Real remote education is more than zooming into a lecturing teacher and following up with some worksheets. What can we do to be sure our teachers are receiving the training needed to make this remote schooling successful? So there's time to create an instructionally, an instructionally sound EPS remote curriculum before the beginning of the school year. And what can we do as parents to work collaboratively with our teachers? And lastly, but most importantly, what can we continue to do as parents, families, students, stakeholders, and school committee members to remain a part of this planning and creation process? I heard the superintendent say at the working meeting on Monday that the school committee is to choose a model, the bones, and then it's up to the administration to fill in the rest. I implore you to continue to consult us as this plan develops. We will be your partners in this remote learning model, serving as teaching assistants, helpers, disciplinarians, taskmasters, schedulers, technologists, counselors, custodians, and food service. Please do not leave us out of this process. Solicit and listen to our concerns. We will not be able to satisfy everyone, but our unique input will be invaluable to our collective success. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I thought my phone was on silent. That was me. Kirsten Kuchet.
Hello. I'll be real quick. I just wanted to voice my support for the SRO to remain in the schools. I, as a student, I went to the public schools and East Hampton my entire life. Students formed a great bond with the SRO, whether it was getting high fives in the hallway, being able to approach them with issues that they may be having in school or outside of school. They even showed up to school functions, including events after school hours. Most of the SROs in the past have been coaches for sports teams or just a supporter cheering our teams on. They were always there to support us in any way we needed them. I strongly encourage to keep the school resource officers in the schools.
Thank you. Now, I can only see part of Julia's last name, so Julia W-O-J-I.
Hi, that's me.
There you go.
So I just want to very quickly say thank you to all of you for the late nights and early mornings and the months of dedication prior to now and upcoming that you've put in. Quickly, my name is Julia Wojciechowski and I have both an incoming first grader and an incoming second grader at Maple. I want to focus tonight on parents and their students, because really, in remote or hybrid system, that's who ends up being responsible for carrying out the learning and implementing whichever plan happens at home or whichever pieces of the plan happen at home. And if, if, if it doesn't work for parents and kids, it's not going to work for the district or DESI or, or teachers for that matter. So how do we do that? Well, I think we start by getting feedback and we incorporate that feedback into practice. Some of that, a lot of that's being done already. But to the best of my knowledge, it's not being done in any formalized or, or structured way. There's, you know, probably a thousand scattershot emails that you've all received, comments like, like tonight from parents and, and teachers and everybody else, and occasional surveys. And I just don't feel like that cuts it in terms of, of getting the feedback that's necessary to make this successful. So I propose that with whichever schedule, plan you adopt, alongside it, there's a formalized and structured system of getting feedback from parents and from kids. And that it has to be ongoing, because no matter how many brilliant minds create the plan, it's new. And all new systems need recalibration, maintenance. And we can only guess at what's going to work right now. So having a more structured system for soliciting feedback is also potentially a way to ensure or maybe shore up our commitment to equity within our plans. You know, we, we can't afford to sit on our heels and wait for the people that folks deem vulnerable to come forward. I know that someone has a list of phone numbers for all of the ELL students. I know that there's a list of kids with 504 plans and IEPs. I know that a counselor or perhaps that controversial SRO knows exactly who the kids are that have a difficult home life and can figure out how to reach them. And we should be proactively inviting these people to have a seat at the table. We need to make sure that this new plan, as it's developed and adjusted, is informed by the people who need the most support. So what does that look like? What does a structured feedback system look like? Maybe it looks like focus group to test apps before they're chosen. And maybe one of those is a group of ELL students. Maybe another are elementary kids with 504 plans. Maybe there are some parents who are essential workers who view the monthly projects at each grade level before they're implemented and they can weigh in on what they think will work from home that month. Maybe it looks like surveys with open-ended questions, but it's routine and it's monthly and people know to expect it. And maybe there's required follow-up from the administration on specifically how the results influence their actions. Maybe there's a school facilitating a group for parents to share strategies or to make recommendations of how things could be better. These are details, obviously, to work out. But what I know is that parents and students must be collaborators and that requires a plan for collaboration. So I urge the school committee to consider officially making a recommendation or adding a guideline to whatever, ever plan you adopt that formalizes a structured feedback system or indicates that that needs to be developed for ongoing input from parents and students for however long a hybrid or, or remote system lasts. It should be comprehensive and should be written to focus outreach on populations that are less heard from and more at risk in addition to obviously offering structured ways for the general population to, to weigh in and shape education. in addition to obviously offering structured ways for the general population to to weigh in and shape education. Again, no plan's going to work that doesn't work for students and their newly appointed parent teachers. I don't envy you your jobs. I wish you luck tonight and all the decisions and I again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Lindsay Mailer?
Hi, thanks for letting me speak, Lindsay Mailer. I have a rising fifth and 10th grader this year, both on IEPs or 504 plans and I cannot stress enough to the school committee that so long as we're having these Zoom meetings as adults, we're doing the wrong thing if we're sending them in person. If we can't meet in person, our children shouldn't be subjected to meet in person and our teachers shouldn't have to worry about that either. And I also would like to point out that there's kind of a silver lining to this for me. There's no greater time for us to push back on Desi and start telling them standardized testing doesn't work. It's not going to work now. In my opinion, it's never worked, but now's our time to push back. Now's our time to change the system, change the way we teach, change the way our kids learn. And I encourage full remote for the entire school year this year if we cannot change the amount of days our children are attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Ruh? Hopefully I said that right?
Ah, yeah, you did. Hi. I'm an East Hampton resident and a parent of a rising fourth grader and a rising first grader at Maple. And I just want to reiterate what I said last week, which is that I love our community. I love our school and I trust our teachers. And I know that if they're given the resources that they need, they're going to do the right thing. They're going to find appropriate and effective ways to communicate and connect, really connect with our children. They always do. They always have, and I trust them to do that this time. As others have said, though, we need the administration and the town to trust the parents to participate in the process. As others have said, we are the ones at home making this happen. I am completely for a full remote program at this point for a lot of reasons, but just to be practical, I think that we and our children have already had enough shifting winds. You know, information is outdated when it's 48 hours old at this point. The very last thing that I want for my children and all of our children is for us to start in a hybrid model and then quickly have to go remote. It it's ineffective to have to shift shift sand so quickly. So I would like to see us just move fully into the remote, put all of our resources, energy and incredible compassion and everything we have going for us in this town with this community, we need to we need to harness it. We need to use it. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Lynn Wanamaker?
Hello. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for reading the many emails that I've sent you and thank you, Dr. Leclerc, for forwarding those. I'm the parent of a rising senior who you heard from earlier tonight. And I am speaking and writing strongly in support of starting with an all remote model. I want to speak to your hearts and your conscience tonight. And I want to ask you where you want to be a year from now. What problems do you want to be dealing with a year from now? Do you want to be standing up to Desi for falling short of unrealistic expectations? And dealing with the remediation of students who lost ground this year, which as Bonnie and Alice spoke to so brilliantly, is going to happen no matter what because people, humans do not operate well when we're experiencing trauma. Or do you want to be dealing with taking kids' names off of the student rolls because they passed away? And replacing teachers, administrators, maintenance people, paraprofessionals, your colleagues, our beloved East Hampton school system employees because they died? What what does future you want to be dealing with as school committee members? When I think about my daughter's reunion, her 10th reunion or her 15th reunion, and I think about the kids that I've known since they entered Maple School as kindergartners, I don't care whether they all graduated together. I don't care whether they went on to college or whatever's next for them on time. I don't care how they did on standardized tests. I care that they're all there. And I care that when my daughter is showing pictures of her family, her partner and the children I hope she has, I want her to be able to say that both of her moms are still there. I don't want her to say that her immunocompromised mom was lost during the pandemic and she wishes that her mom had met her kid. We can opt out of sending our kid to school, but we can't opt out of living in a community with open schools any more than we can opt out of living in a country with an incredibly inadequate federal and state response to a pandemic. And so you're not just making this decision for the people who are going in and out of the schools, but you're making this decision for all the vulnerable people in East Hampton. Our seniors, our high risk people, our folks who are immunocompromised. If we raise the rate of transmission in the city, we risk beyond the school buildings. And so I'm asking you from my heart, I know East Hampton educators can make the best of remote education. It is in your hands to save lives. Please, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra? Myra?
Hello.
Hi.
It is Myra. Thank you to the school committee. Thanks for all the parents that are here. I don't have particularly eloquent words other to say that oh, whatever you're going to pick this evening, no one size fits all model is going to fit all parents and fit all needs. But I'll echo Trish and I'll echo Julia that if a one size, if a one model can't fit all needs, that we try our best as a community, a school committee and parents to adopt supports that will fit students' needs, although the modality in which we meet may be different. But really be thinking about supports that are in place that are individualized. As many people have spoken to the individual needs of their their children, the individual needs of students on IEPs and 504 plans and different levels of function that we think about the supports that are going to be needed in place for whatever is going to be selected in terms of modifications, manipulatives that need to be available for most effective learning for everyone and speak to the realities of the families and the situations that they are in in the times of COVID. And thank you for all your work, your sleepless nights. I do not envy the gravity of the decision this tonight, but I'm happy to lend my perspective. And I just had to say one last thing. It was very difficult to get into this meeting. I had to write down by hand the the address to to get in because it was written on a PDF. So there's probably a lot of voices who perhaps aren't as persistent as I am that are not in this meeting tonight. And perhaps accessibility can be one thing that we can do to make more voices and more families of vulnerable students be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Brown?
Hello. I'm Kelly and I am a parent of a soon to be third year preschooler at Maple Street. I'm also an early childhood specialist. So I'm coming to this with kind of two perspectives. So as the parent of a preschooler, I really want to encourage the school committee tonight to vote for a remote start. My child does much better in person. My husband and I work full time. Remote will not be easy. But I don't think anything will be easy with this school year, whether it's remote, hybrid. But I think that remote is responsible. It's the responsible decision. Preschool classrooms should be filled with joy, exploration and interactions. And to be totally honest, boogers, drool and lots of germs. And that's that's not what's going to happen if we go back to a preschool classroom in any way, shape and form in person. The requirements for keeping children apart from one another, masks, not being able to touch and engage and hug peers and hug their teachers and hug their specialists. That physical contact with preschoolers with three, four and five year olds is as much a part of their learning as playing with toys and manipulatives and singing their morning meeting song. So it's something to consider. Another point, I really want to urge the school committee to stand up to the idea that our public school teachers are responsible for the medical care of our children. We've already asked teachers to handle the jobs of social workers with their work with homelessness, trauma, poverty, et cetera. We've already asked teachers to handle the jobs of law enforcement as they've learned to deal with active shooter drills. We're already asking enough of our teachers. While I know my son's teachers will always come for him and give him a hug if he bumps and falls, it's not their job to have to monitor every cough and sneeze and worry that their medical needs need to come ahead of their teaching and learning. I also want to specifically address preschoolers with special needs. My son has an IEP for pretty specific needs. And this is a much smaller, specific group of students, but because of their age, again, three, four and five year olds in the general scope of, you know, three year olds to 18 year olds, three, four and five year olds are, it's a really specific group of students. And they will need special attention once a decision is made. So I really urge the school committee to ask for or encourage or hold meetings specifically for parents of preschoolers with special needs. I can't imagine that that would be difficult, although it may be. I'm not the one holding all these Zoom meetings. Or at least have a liaison for every parent so that they have someone that they can reach out to so they can discuss specific needs. I I recognize that March was difficult and the needs of my child went unmet. However, I am not incredibly upset about that. I know that it was sort of a let's just brace for impact and let's get through the school year. Totally fine with that. I really, really want the teachers and also the specialists. We don't talk about the specialists a lot, the speech pathologists, the PTs, the OTs, the TVIs. I want them to have just as much training as the teachers in how to do remote learning. And how are we going to do remote learning when a child's classroom is pretty much their home? So how are we going to do that as well? So lastly, I just, I really want to thank the superintendent. I want to thank the school committee. These have been so helpful, these meetings. And it feels like you've been so responsive. I do feel really blessed to be raising my children in East Hampton, especially now with all of this craziness going on. And I really, really especially want to thank the specific East Hampton parents who have been putting information out and making it available to all of the other parents that are not able to attend all of these meetings. It's just been incredibly helpful. So I I think some of them are on this meeting right now. So I just want to make sure that they know that their efforts are greatly appreciated. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Jen Gunderson?
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak and I'll and I'll hope to be quick so somebody else has the opportunity as well. I'm a parent of a rising third grader and rising fifth grader. And I want to request that the school committee consider opening the schools to a hybrid model. I believe that we've had plenty of time. Our administrators have had plenty of time to be able to coordinate how we can do this safely. I think if we do not allow our students back into school to some way, shape or form, we're actually letting our students down. I am fortunate enough that both of my children, they do not struggle in school. They do very well in school. However, when we were trying to do remote, there was minimal learning in our house for my kids. And I'm really concerned on with my kids and the advantages that they have and two parents at home that that are well able to help them. I'm truly concerned about more disadvantaged students that we have in our district and the inability to bring these students into a classroom with their peers and with their teachers, that we will further expand, you know, a socio economical gap, a racial gap in learning between our students. And quite frankly, you know, if if we go fully remote, I mean, I have the privilege and I have the means to be able to hire tutors and and a nanny for my children. And it and I truly feel that that is almost unfair that I am able to do that. And there are so many members of our community that will not have that privilege. And with all the discussion and concern that we have in in East Hampton right now about racial disparities and and how we're not taking into account students that don't have some of the privilege that my family has right now. I do also want to say that the school committee isn't solely responsible for this decision. If you do decide to go to a hybrid model, this blood is not on your hands. As some other people have said, I trust that our school superintendent and the principals and the vice principals at all the schools have been thinking about this since since March 15th because there is no surprise that we were going to be in this until well into 2021. And if they haven't been thinking about it, then I think we have a much larger problem on our hands. So I trust that if you open us up to a hybrid model and that we can try a hybrid model, that they can focus all of their efforts, our superintendent, again, our principals, our vice principals, our guidance counselors, our adjustment counselors of how they can make those classrooms safe. I I'm truly concerned about accessibility to proper education when it is all online. I don't think the playing field will be fair to all students in our community. And I also want to add that you're not responsible for the medical care of my children. I am responsible for that. I'm responsible to ensure that if I feel that it's not safe for my child to go to school, that I would not send my child to school. So I urge you to consider a hybrid model so we can try to have our students back in safely. We can allow our two teachers that are safe to be there and that is the administrator's responsibility to determine who can be safely in school and who cannot be safely in school. And the teachers can provide a safe environment for our students. And then finally, I just also want to support the school resource officer program. If school doesn't open, I understand a school resource officer isn't needed. I'm a big supporter of having another caring and committed adult in the school that can help share information from the town side to the school side. I've worked with school resource officers. I personally know the school resource officer. He is friends, his daughter is friends with my daughter. I know him professionally. And I know he is 100% committed to ensuring the safety of our students. So I would also like to offer, you know, my very, very strong support that the school make a decision to continue having that position within the school to sort of further bridge that gap. Again, when we talk about that there is unrest in our community, this isn't the time to take a police officer away from our students. This is a time to further strengthen those relationships. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for the important work that you do.
Thank you. And before we continue on, I just want to remind everybody, we have a lot of people here and we have a lot of work to do. Your comments are valuable, but I really need to hold people to two minutes. So if you can just kind of keep that in the back of your head as we go along, it would be very helpful. So I, all I see right now is Alyssa.
Hi. I'll keep it short. I just want to thank everybody so much, school committee and the administration. I know you've spent long, long hours on this issue so far. And as many have already said, there aren't any good answers here. I've done a 180 on my own thinking on this issue. I think two months ago, I felt like we'll definitely be able to send our kids back. I felt really comfortable with that decision looking towards fall. I don't think that's a possibility now and our own family has already decided to send our kids through the remote learning program. It's most important to me that our children have a consistent year. And that just doesn't seem like it would be possible without rapid and accurate testing available in our schools. And I really worry about classes being quarantined, kids not being able to see anyone for two weeks at all, resulting in even less social interaction than if we resulting in even less social interaction than if we, we're keeping our kids home and finding ways for them to safely socialize together outside of school hours. I just urge the school committee to make a decision to begin the year remotely so that we can all unite in our focus from here on out, really working to do remote learning well and to bridging the gaps for our most vulnerable students. So thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Betts?
Hi, my name is Margaret Betts and I'm a teacher at Maple. And I have thought a lot about this and thought about all the factors that go into place and what is being asked of teachers and children to do in a hybrid model. And I am asking the school committee to vote for a remote plan that allows for all children and staff to educate and engage safely from home. So Alice Watermaker, who is a former student of mine, said a wonderful thing about how we don't have to choose between safety and high-quality education. And I think she's exactly right. In the spring, which was emergency remote teaching, I saw colleagues really rise and do great work without any training in any of these tools. We just made it work. And I want to talk briefly about Kelly Malanson, who made the most amazing videos. She is a special education teacher at Maple and she made just the most amazing videos about how to speak up for yourself and how to resolve conflict with others. And in my Zoom classes with students that I ran Monday through Friday from ten to eleven-thirty, we would watch it once a week and I called it Miss Malanson Thursday. There was no alliteration. It just was something that we did. And we watched those videos and children learned from them. It was a perfect example of the power of video. Students should not be coming back into buildings because it isn't safe for them and the experience of masked hybrid teaching would be stressful and isolating. Having a nervous teacher at the front of the room six feet away from you as she tries to explain something sounds intimidating and the opposite of the intimate and homey rooms that we try to make. Even the children that are most at risk, and it does feel very convenient for Desi to now speak up in favor of these children that it has fought for years to not support. It required legal cases to force them to meet the special needs of ELL learners and of homeless children and of special education students. And now they're the champions. And I think we should wonder why they are suddenly so in favor of this. All these children can be taught from home because in the end, their safety matters more. This is a very strange year. Teachers cannot come back into buildings either. On the table right now is the proposal that even if we go fully remote, teachers are asked to come every day into buildings. Having forty-plus adults report to a single building with limited air circulation, shared bathroom facilities, limited handwashing stations, and other risks seems unnecessarily hazardous. Many teachers in our buildings also share rooms with other teachers. And they are, they are mindful of the effect of what it will look like to be wearing a mask while Zooming with students. I just ask us all to wonder how a parent answers the question, why is the building safe for me but not safe for my teacher? Thank you.
Okay, a few more. And believe me, I will give it a chance to make sure we don't miss anybody. I have Rachel Nicholas.
Good evening. Thank you. I am a teacher, a sixth-grade teacher at Whitebrook Middle School. And I have been involved in a lot of the discussions in reopening schools. I am on the technology reopening committee. I stay in contact with the other committees. And I am asking for the school committee to choose remote learning experience. I feel this way for several reasons. One, remote teaching in itself is a full-time job. In-person teaching is a full-time job. If you ask the teachers who taught remotely this spring, most of them will tell you that they spend ten to fifteen hours a day planning, communicating with parents, responding to emails, calling students, planning lessons. To ask us to do a hybrid model is asking us to do full, two full-time jobs. And we can't do it properly. So as a teacher, I pride myself on doing the best instruction and have it, making choices that are in the best interests of students. And hybrid, the hybrid models that I have seen simply are not in the best interest of children. There's just a lot to consider in terms of how do we teach for the students who are there and also the students who are, who are not there. Second, the air quality in most of the buildings in this district is very poor. So I have taught at Whitebrook Middle School for almost twenty years. And throughout that twenty years, there have been consistent ventilation systems and heating and cooling issues in that school. There are times when the blowers don't work. Some windows don't, don't open. Half of the classrooms at Whitebrook Middle School have no windows. And I can say right now and add on to what Anna Lauren said, I do not feel comfortable coming back to a classroom where other classes walk through my classroom in order to get to the hallway. And I don't have any windows to air that out. So there are lots of other reasons, but I've been pleased to hear that many parents have already mentioned those concerns. But the two that I would like you to just focus on are the fact that best practice right now tells us that remote learning would be the best because of consistency, because of the ability of teachers to put all of their effort into making engaging lessons, and also because of the ventilation systems. Not Desi, the CDC is very strongly pushing for specific types of filters in order for businesses to go back. And I know we're not going to be able to afford them. So I just feel very strongly that the ventilation system in most buildings is not adequate to the, the challenge of the COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Hou? H-O-U?
I am-
I said it wrong, sorry.
No, that's okay. So I am asking the school committee to consider full-time working parents to opt for a hybrid model. The remote learning this past spring was very hard for my family. I am a single mom who works full-time in the medical field. I am at work every day, Monday through Friday. Finding childcare this summer even has been difficult for me. My-
Okay, it looks like, Sarah, hold on, you might have to come back to us. Sarah, you still there?
I am, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay. And this is also an issue with the Zoom meetings is internet connections are not very stable. So I'm, I'm not sure where I, where you guys all heard, but I am asking for a hybrid model. I have called a couple different childcare centers in East Hampton and asked if they are going to be able to accommodate children of working parents and have been told that they don't believe they can. And if they can, it will be over $200 a week. It's, it's very sad to know that even if my son gets put in a childcare center, I'm not only paying all this money, but he's going to be put in a room where he's not really going to be taught and I won't be able to help him until after I get home at night. Also, if you do decide to go remote, I think you do need to realize that some of these kids will be left home with grandparents who are not computer savvy. My dad, who watched my son one day a week for me in the spring, he didn't even know how to open a Zoom. So I think you need to be aware that kids will be left with grandparents and things need to be made pretty simple as these kids will probably be helping themselves.
Thank you. All right, I have scrolled through and-
Hi, I have, I have my hand up, but I don't know why you can't see it. This is Kira Henninger.
Okay, didn't, didn't, oh, you did not speak yet, sorry.
No.
I apologize. I did not see, okay. Good for you yelling through because I don't want to miss anybody. I'm going to keep scrolling and if I do miss somebody, make sure you, you shout out. Okay, Kira.
All right, thank you. My name is Kira Henninger. I live on Maple Street and my two children are rising second graders at Maple Elementary School. I urge you to vote to begin the 2020, 2021 school year as remote learning, as many school districts and colleges in Western Mass have recently done. The rates in Mass are continuing to climb and we are no better off than we were when school closed in March. I appreciate all the hours spent by the superintendent, administrator, staff, and school committee members discussing and problem-solving the never-ending issues around a hybrid model to find something that would best meet the needs of as many students and families as possible. However, there's so much we don't know about the virus and the data that we do have supports a full remote model. I understand many families are worried about childcare for their students. I'm worried as a working parent and I still have no idea how I'm possibly, I'm going to work full-time while managing the remote learning of my young children. However, making a decision to keep school partially open as a solution to this problem is not the answer. The health and safety of children and staff must be the priority. And right now, it is not safe for in-person learning in our school buildings. In a remote model, I urge the school district to be as flexible as possible to accommodate the needs of staff and families by not requiring a one-size-fits-all model where all students are expected to log in at required times. Many parents will be unable to assist younger children in their remote learning during their own workday, whether they be working in or outside of the home. Many of your staff members will also be charged for supporting their own children's remote learning. And traditional school hours will not be feasible for all. Please be as flexible as possible when negotiating with the educators' union regarding their changing working conditions. Our teachers and staff are the heart of our schools. I echo what others have said tonight. We support our children's needs by supporting our teachers and staff. Teachers need to be remote as well and to be safe. We did not have remote teaching and learning in the spring. We were in crisis. However, there is time to provide teachers and staff with the professional development and collaboration time needed to create a flexible, supportive, and engaging curriculum to meet the needs of a diverse group of students, particularly, particularly our most vulnerable students. As you have heard tonight and over the last several weeks, you have a dedicated, passionate group of parents willing and able to collaborate and support our schools and community. Please choose the remote model so that the staff and administrators can begin to redesign what learning will look like this fall. I'd also like to add that systematic racism has made it so that Black and Brown students and families are more likely to be adversely impacted by this virus. Twice as many people of color have been infected than white people. As was stated earlier, we can recoup learning, we cannot recoup people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Agnes Kaufman?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you. I have a child that's going to be going in the fifth grade and also into the sixth grade. And I just want to echo a recent parent about stating working full-time parents and remote learning, it's, it's very challenging. I am a healthcare worker. My husband's a healthcare worker. I don't have the resources to stay home. I don't have a choice to stay home. I don't know who's going to stay home with my kids. My son is on a IEP and that was a challenge last year. That was really, really challenging. I don't know what's going to happen in the fall. I hear everybody's concerns about the health. I get that, I understand that. But we also have to really consider the working parents, the full-time working parents that don't have other options with kids with special needs, who need more direction. And I hear, you know, everyone's strapped, you know, everybody's, everyone's working hard. I get that, I appreciate our teachers. Our teachers are working hard, the school committee is working hard, everyone's working hard. How are we going to get more teachers, more individuals to support our children who have special needs when we're already strapped? I don't know what the answer is, but that really needs to be seriously considered. And, and, and we can't neglect the children who have special needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Elliott?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Hannah Elliott and I live on Strong Street. I'm planning to start my fourth year of teaching fourth grade this September at Center Pepin. And I'm terrified. Terrified that we'll return to school buildings and quickly find that many students, staff, and family members become infected with COVID-19. I long to be back in school with my students, like many others said, but only if I know we'll really all be safe. As a teacher, it's a huge part of my job to try to create a happy, safe environment. I use facial expressions to help communicate that I care about each of my students and to build a trusting relationship that's essential for learning. I have quiet pull aside chats with my students, kneeling beside a desk or standing just outside the doorway, to help them work through anxieties, fears, and heartbreaks that all too often leave children unable to focus on learning. If we are in the classroom this fall, there will be no face-to-face learning. I will be shielding my face with a mask and relying on my eyes and voice to impart my caring as students sit six feet apart from each other and most even further from me. When a student raises a hand to ask for help, I'll call out across the room to answer or perhaps communicate through Zoom as we each sit with a laptop in front of us. If I leave my six-foot safe zone to engage in a pull aside chat or provide less public, more individual support, I'll be putting everyone in the room at risk. So how can I teach social skills when students are masked and apart? Who will sit with a student who's struggling to master long division? And how will I comfort a nine-year-old child whose parent or spring died because the virus tore through our building? Like many have said, teaching and learning will inevitably be different this fall. Some students might fall behind academically for a while. And I don't mean to dismiss that, that's a big deal. But we can catch students up on learning, we can't catch them up if they are dead. Reopening buildings in any way, as case numbers continue to increase in our state and country, would be a way of stating that the lives of our teachers, families, and children are expendable. I urge our district to choose a remote learning model until it is truly safe to return to our schools. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I am scrolling through. Maren, if you can do the same and just make sure I don't miss anybody. I believe we have everybody who has one-
I could say something if it's okay.
Who is this, who is this?
It's Peter.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So I, I have two boys and entering seventh and ninth grade. And I would love for the school to be able to do the hybrid model, but I just don't think it's going to work yet. To me, if you can't feel like it's very low-risk to eat in restaurants inside, then I don't see how we can send kids to school at this time. And the other reason to me is that school would start and then classes would have to be quarantined. You know, when some, there's cases and whole schools might to get, have to get shut down. I think it would be pretty disruptive to try to start that way. But some working parents and special needs kids, you know, might need to have something on-site that can be designed for them. What, what I, what I would really like to push for is that between now and when school starts, whatever is chosen by the school committee, is that all parents are called. It's either by, you know, school staff or parent volunteers to do this. I don't really think a written survey is any way to get people's needs addressed. And I also think that if everybody was called, they would also feel heard. And I think that would reduce a lot of stress for people if they were called instead of just, just filling out a survey. Because I know when I fill out the survey for me, I couldn't really articulate our family needs just in a few questions. So, and I know they've done this at Holy Community College where my wife works. You know, they found a way to call the students. So I think that, that's something that should have, all, all the parents, I think, should be called. So that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? If I'm frowning, it's because I'm looking for-
But if I can speak for a second.
Who is this?
Amanda Moody.
Okay.
I have the unique perspective. Not only do I work alternative special ed, I have a- I have a rising sophomore and a rising fourth grader. Um, I have a child with significant special needs who has been attending summer school. March was hard. What I have seen is even in that short time, giving teachers a chance to gather their thoughts, gather their materials um in a little bit of planning time, summer school has been a very different experience with teachers who were prepared and able to offer an entirely different remote learning experience. And I would like those in decision-making positions tonight to realize that even that short time has had a huge impact on what they were able to offer remotely. And continuing to train our staff, continuing to provide the resources will only continue to enhance that experience. I do not envy the position you are in. Thank you all for all of the time you have already given. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Fleury?
Hi, thank you. Um, so I've lived in East Hampton for the last fourteen years. I live on uh 418 Main Street. I've been a paraprofessional educator at Maple Elementary since 2017. I'm deeply invested in the outcome of this vote tonight. I would like to urge this committee to choose full remote learning for all students to begin the school year and to adopt the phased-in model that has recently been circulated by South Hadley. The uh the acceptable number of deaths in East Hampton Public Schools for the 2020 to 2021 school year is zero. But if we reopen in any in-person capacity, people will get sick and people will die. We have not resolved the issue of ventilation in our school buildings. We have not resolved the issue for how bathrooms can be used safely. Nothing for fire drills, active shooter drills and more. Putting screens on windows and leaving big health and logistical questions unanswered is grossly inadequate preparation for re-entering buildings. The current plan for children under six as well as special populations has them not wearing masks. There is absolutely no evidence to prove that that is safe, either for them or their teachers. And as a colleague of mine so aptly put it, comparing a life to any student's academic progress in a given year is not rational. Lives are on the line here, so let's not pretend otherwise. Let's not ignore that issue. I understand this is not an easy decision to make and I would not want to be in any of your shoes. But teachers want to be in buildings working with kids when it is safe. We miss them. We love working with them. And when adequate health and safety measures are in place, we want to be working with them again, face to face. But the key here is when it is safe. There are real sacrifices that have been made and must continue to be made to avoid the devastating loss of life that has already afflicted so many American cities and towns. Almost five million cases of coronavirus are confirmed in the United States and nearly 160,000 Americans have already died. We are not immune to their fate and it will be our future if we choose poorly. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sabrina Herman? Sabrina? If you, Maren, if you see Sabrina.
I'm here.
There you go.
Can you see me? There, hi. Thank you for the opportunity. I am a parent of a rising senior and also a rising eighth grader in East Hampton. I'm also a trauma therapist. And I have grave concerns for our children, for our parents, for our educators. I am strongly urging for full remote education. We cannot learn or teach or receive any sorts of support if we're constantly in a hyper vigilant state. It just is merely impossible for our brains to expand in those moments of time. It is caught, this moment of time is calling upon us to just re-envision our priorities. A child will learn only when there is safety as the priority. And if parents, teachers can feel safe in a remote learning with the full appreciation of how difficult it is gonna be for parents that have to leave home. I'm strongly urging that we also find different ways to support those parents in our community. And I really love this community and I think we can find different ways to support those parents. Thank you.
Thank you. So I am scrolling through and it looks as though we are at the end of public speak. And I am just checking in a second time. Okay. We're looking pretty good.
Hey, Cindy, I don't see any additional hands up.
All right, thank you. So a quick question. Um, I'm gonna close public speak and thank you so much, everybody who did talk. Does anybody need a break for a minute before we go on or should we just plow on? School committee, let's plow on.
Yeah, at the very least, let's push through.
I think if we just push, yeah, I think if we just show and then if people need to just, you know, turn their camera off if they need a quick break, they can.
Okay, sounds good. Um, and Dr. Leclerc, I, um, in my uh haste to read Marissa's statement, I forgot to allow you to do an announcement. Do you want to do that?
No, I think I can just jump in. I I think that if, um, whoever the host is, if they could share their screen, I mean, share the ability for me to share my screen, that would be helpful.
Done.
So this is the announcement part, not the um school survey part, because we have to do policy first.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually I turn to you and say, Dr. Leclerc, do you want to make an announcement?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, then we have subcommittee updates. We have some policy uh to go through. Shannon?
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, I'll make this quick, I promise. Um, we do have a meeting coming up on the nineteenth to go over some new guidelines from MAS C in regards to some of the policies that we're already making changes to. Um, and we also have a new face mask policy that's gonna be coming out. So, um, we are meeting on the nineteenth, so we'll present, you know, the week after. Um, I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of E B C D, emergency closings.
I second that. Roll call vote. Lori, Lori Garcia, yes. Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, yes.
Aaron?
Aaron Goldstein, yes.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle? I thought she was here. Maybe she stepped away.
I'm sorry, I keep saying Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Duh. Thank you. And Cynthia Kuzynski, aye. Sorry, we have to do this every time, so just bear with us, people.
Um, I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of the deletion of the East Hampton Public School I G A Basic Instruction Program.
I second that. Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye. Now I know who I go after. Usually I go after Maren.
I'll try not to mess it up. Let's.
Don't forget it.
Cindy Kuzynski, aye.
Routine's important. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of um accepting MAS C Policy I G A Curriculum Development.
I second that. Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Uh, Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzynski, aye.
Um, I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of MAS C Policy I G B Support Services Program.
I second that. Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzynski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for a second reading of the MAS C I H B E A, English Learner Education.
I second that. Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzynski, aye.
Last one. I make a motion for the second reading of MAS C Policy I H B H E, Remote Learning.
I second that. Lori Garcia, yes.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Kuzynski, aye. Great.
That was less than two minutes.
I know. Thank you. That was awesome. All right, now we're gonna turn it back to Dr. Leclerc.
Hi.
And I think I wanted Maren to uh share.
Yeah, I think he did. I think I'm all set. So I'll start with, um, the first thing on the agenda says survey results, but I can, I'm happy to put it up. We went over it Monday night and nothing has really changed. Do you want me to? Do you want me to move on from that or do you want me to just show it?
Uh, thumbs up, everybody. I'm okay with moving on. We've already gone through them. Yes? Mayor, is it okay to go through? Yes. Okay.
Okay. So, um, before I share my screen, I just want to say that I think that the, um, we've had some really thoughtful discussion in the work sessions and we've really heard from, um, people both in those work sessions and via email. And I've um communicated with everyone that's emailed me, the families that have emailed me, that I was sharing their emails with all of you. So I know you were probably a little inundated, but I wanted you to see people's um messages to um to our schools and some of them were directly to you and I was CC'd on them. But um I think just hearing from so many voices tonight, you can get a sense of the uh the the challenges and this has been extremely difficult time for the administrative team as we've tried to work through um all of the kind of the the questions that we've had as the summer has progressed and um where we started, um, I don't know how many weeks ago now, um, the guidance came out, I think, June twenty-fifth is, um, you know, our thinking has shifted a little bit as we've gone through the summer. And um, but as you know, um, as I've said right from the beginning, we do have to produce kind of these three plans, which I went over with you at our last school committee meeting. I have that PowerPoint kind of queued up. If you want to go back to anything, I'm happy to. But I do have a different PowerPoint tonight because as a um, as a committee, I I've kind of heard your um direction to me based on the other night. And I really talked with my administrative team, so I'm gonna share with you um our presentation for tonight. Um, and whoops, said my screen sharing is paused. Can you still see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I want to share it, but this little thing is in my way. Oh.
The last.
Let me try that again. I just need to move something. I need to move this up. There we go. Technical, technical things here. All right, so um, I'm gonna make this presentation tonight with the caveat that you know, we know not everyone is going to be happy, number one. This is a very difficult time as so many people have already characterized, so I won't go into great detail. This is a working plan and if the committee wants to make tweaks or adjustments as we go through this, I can certainly um take that feedback and make adjustments. So, um, we are recommending um a remote start with a phased-in hybrid model, which is um what some of the um area school districts are also proposing. So phase one um would be, and I'm just gonna read it because I know not everyone is on a laptop, uh, would be staff training and phase one would be uh no students at all. It would be pretty much from the point of your approval. Um, I have August twenty-sixth up there, but it could be from tonight through September eleventh. September eleventh would be the last day that we would have the um training. So we need to do training, no matter what model we put forward. But in a remote model, we think it's valuable to have um a lot of training opportunities in place for our staff. Um, for those of you that have been part of trainings, you know that we can't necessarily sit on a Zoom session for six hours and take it all in. So we need to have breaks and we need to do this in a methodical way. Um, we need to have recorded sessions. We need to have live sessions. So we need to do all those things. Phase two would be actually when we begin with students and that would be on September fourteenth. For those people that did not um hear, last week at the school committee meeting, the the committee voted to shift the calendar out to a September fourteenth start, so some parents may be hearing that um for the first time. And uh we're proposing that um all students in the district would be fully remote between uh for the first month or so until October ninth. Phase three, we're proposing uh special populations, and I'll go into that a little bit more, um, would be phased into a hybrid model coming into the building. Um, and I'm happy to elaborate on that in a few slides. And the rest of the student body would continue to be remote in looking at November fourteenth, bringing in the rest of the student body. And of course, these phases or these points in time are dependent on health metrics um at the state and in regional level. So we would mirror a phased-in approach as the governor has exemplified for the state. And at any time, if we need to stop a phase or if we need to roll back a phase, we can do that. So staff readiness would be phase one. Again, no students would be in school until September fourteenth. There's the training that we um have discussed. We have, we've brought on, we've hired um an instructional technology specialist that will do the, a lot of the training modules for our staff. But we also have a lot of staff that are very skilled and will be able to do some of the training as well. September fourteenth to October ninth would be fully remote for all students. Phase three would be bringing in the special populations would be October thirteenth to about November third. Um, and this would include substantially separate programs um such as our SOAR and our LEAP program. It would include um our preschool students. I have to fix this slide that's not on here. Our ELL students, our foster care and our homeless students. Um, and then all other grades would continue to be remote. And please remember that when we say these students would be welcomed into the school, that's dependent on health metrics and of course at the discretion of families. If families need or desire to keep their students home, they may absolutely do that. Phase four, the hybrid model would begin um on November fourth if our health metrics warranted that. Um, and families may again choose to remain in remote learning. They may continue on. Remote learning, this is, this is Maren's, this is Maren's um slide. She shared this with me, where we're sharing with you that we really are talking about kind of four groups of students. Our general ed students would be in a Group A or Group B. Um, Group C would be our substantially separate populations. And when they're welcomed back, back into the school, it could be in the building as much as four days. it could be in the building as much as four days because we know that they are the students that struggle the most with technology. And students that find themselves in Group D are those students that their families have made the decision to keep them remote for the, the entire year, no matter what the school district is doing. And a hybrid learning model, just to show you, in Cohort A, students would be coming into the building two days a week. And they would be remote learning three days a week. Cohort B students would be three days a week remote and two days in person. Our substantially separate programs or our special program students would be in the building up to four days a week. And our remote students would continue all remote. And that would be when we, that would be as of November 4th if our metrics held. I have sample schedules for you here. And again, these are samples. We're trying to keep a hybrid schedule and a remote schedule very similar so that students have the routine, they have predictability, they understand what their, how their classroom runs. And we think that that would be important to go from a remote model to a hybrid model.
I'm going to ask that people turn their, their mics off so we don't get any background. Sorry, Dr. Leclerc.
That's okay.
Thank you.
What we haven't built in here yet are the specialist schedules. So that's, that's part of the reason I'm telling you this is a sample schedule. Okay, this is us giving you kind of a roadmap of the day, if you will. This is a sample middle school schedule. And we have breaks throughout the day for students to move, whether they're at home or whether in this, they're in the school building. There's time for teacher prep periods. There's breaks in the classes. Zoom classes would not be the entire block of time, the entire, say, 45 minutes. It might be 15 or 20 minutes. And then students would have small group work or they would go do an assignment on their own. They could be doing work with the teacher. They could be working with other students. The high school schedule would mirror the typical high school schedule that we have currently in place. Benefits of this proposal, there's time to assess and make improvements to buildings. You know, I think that people have, as has been expressed tonight, perceptions about our older buildings. And I know that, you know, some of those perceptions may be warranted. So we are going to do an outside, work with an outside consultant to come in and do a report. We have a report from about a year ago for Whitebrook that tells us that Whitebrook meets or exceeds every air quality standard that the state puts forward. So when people say that the air quality is not good, I'd like to direct them to that report. We're going to do updated reports. We're going to do that for all of our buildings and make the, you know, adjustments that we need to make. We have transportation challenges, as every district does, because we're limited as to the number of students that we can put on a bus. So those are challenges that we're going to need time to overcome. This will give us time to monitor health data. And I know that people have expressed concern about all the college students that will be coming back into the region starting next week. And I think that if we put off bringing any students into the building until mid-October, we'll definitely have a sense if that had a negative impact, bringing those students back into the area. And we can track that health data. And this gives us time to really establish appropriate routines with students so that when they come into the building, we're ready just to move forward. Some of the considerations that we're still trying to overcome, and there are no easy answers, and it's been expressed tonight, families that need access to in-person learning in some manner, staffing challenges, buildings challenges. It hasn't been mentioned, but our CTEC students, those are our high school students that spend half a day at their vocational experience. Students that struggle academically, I've heard that tonight. The social emotional needs of our students, heard that tonight. And technology comfort levels. There's a lot of work we need to do, both for our families and for our staff to kind of up their comfort level with technology. So those are some of the things that we're working on that I think will become easier for us to hone in on once we select a model. You know, right now, we're, we're trying to plan for so many separate kind of silos that it's hard for us to kind of drill down until we know which direction that we're actually moving in. So I think we'll be able to address some of these challenges once we select a model. So the other thing that I will share hopefully is, let me go back to that. I will share, we have a calendar here. That's just a visual aid. And I don't, I think you can see this. We have Phase One for teachers. Phase Two is fully remote, all grades. Phase Three, bringing in our special populations and all the rest of the grades continue hybrid. And then we wouldn't look at bringing all students back in until at least November 4th. And the committee has also been provided the, the plan. It's about six pages long, but let me just, I don't think that there's anything specific, but it does address what the staff responsibilities and what the student responsibilities will be in each section. Oh, let me just scroll down to this. This is the end. This is page three. So we have heard about a request from our school committee, someone on our school committee, and I've heard this from parents, about exploring the possibility of a remote learning center. So we would look at forming a committee that could work on some of those aspects for us and explore any opportunity. That, that wouldn't happen until Phase Two. We wouldn't be able to start that on Phase, until Phase Two, which is when students begin remote. Our instructional planning committee is looking at schedules and working on factors around families that are going to have children in daycare and are not going to be able to access live Zooms and what that will look like for those families. In a remote learning model, it hasn't been said yet, but we won't have fall sports in any way, shape or form. And then there's just an explanation of what our cohorts would look like and a rationale for why we would want to have our learning days look the same, whether we're in a hybrid or a remote plan. So this, the committee has been given this, and I'm happy to post this. It has a lot of the same information, but it's about six pages long. So I'm happy to share that if that's the model that you want to move forward with. But I'm also happy to revise and edit it based on concerns that you raised tonight or adjustments that we need to make. So I kind of yield back to Cindy or anyone that has questions.
So before we go into discussion, I have a question. Mayor LaChapelle, I am in possession of a memorandum from you.
Yes.
And I did not know if you would like to read it or have me read it and if now is the time before we begin our discussions, or do you want to wait?
No, if you could read it into the, the record, that would be, I, I, great. I, I think it's a, a good time to do it before we start discussion.
Okay, so I will do that. So I received this, and it is from Mayor LaChapelle, and it is concerning public buildings and the health metrics. "The City of East Hampton's response to COVID-19 puts public health and safety first. The planning and preparation for school learning models are second. The school department is the steward of school buildings for the city who owns the buildings. The reopening of public buildings is solely a public health decision jointly overseen by the local Board of Health and myself as mayor. Reopening public buildings, including schools, flies in the face of current public health guidance and data trends. East Hampton Public Buildings were closed four and a half months ago to flatten the upward curve, curve of COVID-19 transmissions, infections and deaths. Public health metrics drove this decision. These same metrics are higher than levels that led to the closure of public buildings. Only behavioral-based public interventions slow infection and transmission. Wearing a mask, hand washing, socially and physically distancing are the most effective tools to stop COVID contract tracing and, to, excuse me, to stop COVID-19. There's a word missing.
Sorry.
Contract trace, no, it's the way it printed. Contract tracing and testing helps us predict and further prevent infection spread. We know that proper air circulation and ventilation are vital in slowing COVID-19. Several of our public buildings already suffer from air circulation and ventilation issues. Not one East Hampton Public Building's HVAC systems are known to protect against COVID-19. The city is arranging for thorough inspections of every public building's air quality systems. Our current strategy of limiting the number of people in our buildings as not to tax the current air circulation systems has been successful to our knowledge. The local Board of Health and mine office continue to monitor state and local public health measures to best protect the community at a time where the COVID-19 virus determines our actions. We can only act responsibly based on the science as it applies to East Hampton's unique conditions and resources. And Mayor, that's all that I have. Is that the end of it?
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we open this up to discussion. Anybody want to speak first? Laurie?
I would like to thank Dr. Leclerc and the committees that have been working so diligently for so many weeks, months now. I truly appreciate that you mentioned remote learning centers in your model. I listened to Sarah and to Agnes. I heard them. I understand their concerns. I've been listening for weeks. I've been reading the emails. For that reason, I was so happy to bring to this committee the idea of the learning centers. Is it a perfect answer? No. Could there be problems? Yes. But is it a way that we can tackle all of these challenges, challenges that face us? It is. And I particularly liked what Julia said. And she said about getting continual feedback from the community. We should do that. We need to hear what is working and what is challenging. And this isn't a decision that we will just make tonight. This is something that we are going to work on and make sure that we are doing the best for everybody in our schools. Everybody means the students and the teachers and the families that the students go home to. So as a community, and I've said it before, we can make it work. And if it means making sure the people that don't have the means to be able to support their own children, whether economically, whether technological savvy, we can make it work together. We can create pods in communities. I know that there are people that have so many strategies that they want to share with us as a school committee and with the teachers in the schools. We need to listen to those people. We have to do this together. And I thank you once again for working to make this work for the health of everybody. And as we consider the metrics, I'd like to thank Matt Gertzma, who reached out to me, who has been working on a model to detect what would be the factors that change the metrics. So I say, please, listen to the people in our community. They have so much to offer. Just as Dre stepped forward and she offered her technological educational expertise. Once again, another parent. So the teachers who are parents in our community have extra struggles and we need to listen to them. They not only have to teach the children of the community, they have to worry about their own children. We cannot ask them to go into school buildings to teach remotely and then have to worry about their own children. We don't want them to drag their children into buildings that aren't safe. We have to trust educators that they know what is best, not only for the students, but for their own families in our community. And I'll say before I get too emotional, some of you may have seen me start to cry because I am a teacher and I had to say goodbye to my students after Zoom classes when I couldn't help them in person, when I couldn't hug them, when I couldn't hand them a tissue. And I know how hard that is. So the social emotional needs have to always be considered as well, not only of the students, but of the teachers that need to reach the students. Thank you very much.
Cindy, you're muted.
Thank you. I coughed. I didn't want anybody to... Okay. Dr. Leclerc.
I just wanted to add, when, when Laurie was speaking, she reminded me that I did not say, when I was making that presentation, and I think it's worth noting that I did sit down with our city health agent and with the Board of Health, the Chair, Maggie Hebert of the Board of Health, to review this plan earlier in the week. And they thought that it was an appropriate plan. And we've agreed to meet every 30 days to review the metrics. So I just wanted to put that out there because Laurie was talking a little bit about the metrics.
Shannon?
Okay, actually, Allison, that was one of the, the questions I wanted to ask in regards to the plan that you had proposed, was as far as meeting every 30 days. Do you think that's an adequate time? I just, I think that...
Bree and I, Bree and I talk, Bree, who is the city health agent, and I talk and text and email quite often. And so I hear from her if there's an uptick or things like that. And if it's something I need to follow up on a more formal meeting, we schedule a Zoom meeting, but at the very least, 30 days. And we can definitely do more than that. Bree is pretty out straight as the city health agent right now. And I, I, I don't know Maggie Hebert. I, I've met her a few times as the Board of Health Chair, but I think she also has other things that she does. So, you know, it's, it's, I want to, I want to value their time is what I'm saying. So Bree and I text and email and call each other quite frequently. But a formal meeting with the three of us happens usually like once a month. But, and that was their suggestion, but I'm happy to go back and make it more frequent than that.
The only reason I question is because we had, you know, the, the special populations, you know, ending. And then it's only three weeks later, you want the rest of the classes to go hybrid. That's not even 30 days. You know what I mean? And so you guys, so that's why I'm asking the question. The other thing is, I'm a little confused as far as the teachers. Are they expected to be in the building teaching remotely? Are they expected to be in the building teaching remotely?
That's a point for negotiation.
Oh, okay. Okay. But as of right now, I do see that the professional development and everything is virtual.
Correct.
Okay. The only other thing, okay, I don't have any other questions right now.
I sort of have a follow-up question of sorts, if I may. I trust that the timelines as presented should give us ample time to reassess the trends that are going on around us. One thing I feel a bit concerned about, and I wonder if you could speak to, is I rather feel like the way that it's presented, teachers will begin teaching in a remote model and then because of the quick turnaround between September 14th to August, to October 9th, rather, I worry that they're going to have to sort of immediately shift gears into thinking and planning for the implementation of some students being in person. And I, you know, having listened to the community's concerns about whether or not we provide a robust remote plan, as so many people have described it, I worry that the teachers are going to start teaching that remote plan and then immediately have to start thinking differently. And I wonder if that was a part of the decision-making and whether or not you think more time might be valuable to give the teachers the opportunity to settle into that remote education groove, if you will. And I suppose I pose that to Dr. Leclerc and the rest of my colleagues to see your thoughts on the matter.
Cindy, did you want to, did you want to speak? I'm happy to. I just want...
No, I'll let you go first. And I'm trying to let everybody go before me if they would like.
Sure. So this is definitely, we thought about this. Many school districts are bringing special populations in right at the beginning, in whatever that phase is when school starts. I really felt as though we should take a beat and make sure that people feel comfortable and rather than overwhelm children with just understanding the routine of the day, we could give them the opportunity to establish that routine at home. And then it would be more seamless when they come into the building. What I would say, Jonathan, is one of the reasons we are promoting this idea of a schedule saying very similar when children are in hybrid or remote is so we take some of that stress off of teachers to recreate everything once they move into a hybrid setting. So that's to address the teachers. For the students, these are the students that we know struggle greatly with a fully remote plan. And my concern, or my hesitation about waiting too long is that these students may not be able to get into the groove of being online, engaging with their teachers, engaging with their peers. These will be students that we don't want, as people have expressed tonight, these students are students that we don't want to fall through the cracks. So, I mean, I'm definitely open to, you know, if we want to discuss adjusting it, but I know some districts, I believe North Hampton, who took their vote last night, for example, I spoke with their superintendent today, their special populations are projected to come back on the first day at the start of school. So, you know, so it's, and I'm sure you can point to other districts that are doing something different. So it's kind of a difficult decision. I'll stop talking because I know others want to get in.
I'm going to stop wait just a second to turn a light on, so bear with me. I'll still hear you, don't worry.
Can you just maybe speak to the difference between four weeks, six weeks, just in terms of some of that, you know, four weeks of fully remote, three weeks of, you know, remote plus, and to use sort of Greenfield's language there, and then to go to full hybrid after seven weeks in? Is there, was there something specific to those, that timeframe?
Well, we were looking at the, the four weeks, I thought, was a good time to establish the routines and to analyze and review the health metrics and for us to do the work we want to do, making sure the buildings are safe. If those things don't happen, then we would have to push the four weeks out. We'd have to be flexible with that. For example, if the mayor does not deem that the buildings are safe around the Columbus Day period, we're going to have to push that out for more, for more time. So we were looking at the Columbus Day break, or the Indigenous Peoples' holiday, presents an opportunity for us to have a three-day weekend. We know that symptoms normally show up within 48 hours, so that would give us an idea if there are active cases or a spike in our area that we would need to be aware of. The next break that we looked at was around the election cycle. And we would look at Monday and Tuesday of that week as an opportunity for professional development and then bring students in beginning on the fourth. That would give us, for the majority of our students, seven weeks of remote learning. I'm trying to balance the idea of safety and our buildings with, you know, looking at the health metrics and what's a reasonable timeframe for us to assess. So November seemed like a reasonable time. But again, it would be depending on the metrics. It would be depending on what phase we are from the governor. It would depend on whether the mayor wants to open the public buildings again. So we would, you know, these are just guideposts, if you will, and we may need to move them along the field as time progresses.
Another special population that we talked about the other day were our youngest students, the pre-K through two. And I know that Cindy has a lot to talk about as far as the tents go, but it's still something that I feel that we should pursue. Those young children, especially ones that have never had a classroom experience, to be able to have an opportunity to meet their teacher outside in the safety of open air under a tent would probably help them to engage in the remote learning, even if it's just for a few weeks. But I know Cindy has a lot to say and I don't want to take her...
You're doing fine. Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the air quality and public buildings. So we're, the city's procurement office is pulling together an RFQ, which is a request for proposals that are qualitative based on the experience the companies have, to go through each one of our public buildings and look at that air quality system. And we are anticipating that it will be a series of filters and attachments to the existing, to the existing systems. There might be some energy savings, but more importantly, we're looking at suppressing COVID-19 in our heating and air conditioning, air circulation systems. That RFQ, just to give a timeline, and I really appreciate Superintendent Leclerc reworking of the plan. I agree with her wholeheartedly that the guideposts that she put in really make, they make a lot of sense to me. There's not a perfect answer. When the RFQs come back, we are going, we're pushing really hard to get them out as fast, out as fast as possible to get bids and get that work started. You know, because of the timeline and, and the guideposts that Superintendent Leclerc just laid out. So I'm very aware, the procurement is very aware, building maintenance is very aware that, that we need to work through these as fast as possible. And, you know, priorities in this, this bid are the, are the schools and COA. So not that everybody else is an important, but, but those are two special populations and starting with those elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, I'm all over the place. My mind is a whirl. Anybody want to say anything before I start asking questions? Okay. All right. A number of things. Laurie mentioned my belief in tents. I believe that whenever we do go to hybrid, we should begin using tents. Schools are doing them, colleges are doing them. The benefit of a tent is open air. There is a lessening of anxiety as the teacher and the students do not feel confined and there's an increased measure of safety. And I really believe, and I said this on Monday, that we should be buying 20 by 30 tents. I talked to the mayor about getting use of Nantucket Park, and that appears as though that is something that we could do. Yes, it is clunky. Nothing that we are going to come up with is ever going to be perfect. One parent tonight, actually a bunch of parents, but one that I wrote down right away, said that we need to be flexible. And somebody else said we need to be creative. And I think we need to be unbelievably creative and flexible and be able to move on a dime. So I have a number of concerns. I, I really believe we need, we need to, if we're thinking about in-person in the beginning, I think we need to be in a tent. And my concern is, I don't want to go to any in-person special populations, pre-K, kindergarten. I don't want to go into a situation where we're bringing them inside as our first step, unless we absolutely need to. And I personally don't think we absolutely need to enter a building until it starts to get really cold. And so what I would like to see at any time that we're going to do trainings, we begin with using a tent. Laurie came up with the idea of these learning support centers. Again, we're talking about under a tent. We would set them up. People would be able to come and we would be calmer, safer, and healthier. Okay? So that's, I'm just throwing it out there. I firmly believe that, that we need to do tents before we do rooms. Second of all, I am still concerned about bathrooms, staff bathrooms. I believe that, and, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I believe that if we were to use the UV machines that hospitals use to clean rooms, that we will increase the safety of using staff bathrooms. That is not to say that the student bathrooms are a lower priority, but the staff bathrooms in many of our schools are like little closets. They are very tiny and there is absolutely no ventilation. If you use them wearing a mask, masks do not stop particulates completely. They only shorten the distance that they fall. So if you have 20 people using the same bathroom in an enclosed space, eventually that's going to build over the day. And I think we have to address that before we ask people to use those bathrooms. The other thing that worries me is asking teachers to come in to teach remotely if we are teaching remotely. If the buildings are not safe for us to have our students in and the bathrooms are not safe and we haven't figured it out and we have everybody learning remotely, there, it just does not make any sense to put teachers into a building because you're forcing them to share the air, share the ventilation, share the bathrooms. That concerns me greatly. I am, I believe that the health of our teachers is crucial to making this work. We need people to feel confident and to be very healthy. So my push is whatever we need to do to keep everybody the healthiest is where I want to land. Now, I know, you know, Dr. Leclerc, this is not to belittle the work that we've done at Whitebrook to improve the air quality, but the mayor in her memorandum, it's a problem. The buildings have improved. Whitebrook has improved its air quality for a normal life. In the normal course of business, the air quality has improved and it passes. That is not the same to say that we have the ventilation and the air quality to have people in the buildings, in rooms without windows or poorly vented rooms, and still call that air quality passable. There's so little that we know about this virus. What we do know is that ventilation is crucial. And I'm really concerned till we figure that out and we figure out how to make sure that the bathrooms are safe. I am really concerned about anything that we do in those buildings. A few other things, and then I'll go back. I would love for the school committee to be looped in on the information that you get from Bree. I really think that, number one, I do not want to be the last one to know that something has gone wrong. I hope that nothing does, but when and if we have special populations in the building or any in-person teaching, I, I think that the school committee needs to know immediately. And I think that we have to very quickly have a meeting of the minds for what do we have as our bar? Where is our ouch bar? And unless I know where that is, I'm not really comfortable. I think we all have different opinions. We have different comfort levels. Maybe we don't. Maybe we're all of one mind, but I think there should be a group that includes parents and teachers and school committee and health and decide where that bar is and then present it so that we vote on it. I don't like the fact that we're saying we're going to worry about it when the governor or the commissioner of education decides that we've reached that bar. I think in this community, as you can see, we've had 215 people on this call. Parents have, and teachers have tirelessly sat in on our meetings. People care about what's going on. This is an important life issue. And I think we need to definitely settle on a number, a bar, a metric to, to go forward. And I don't, you know, we can put a date in on a phase, but the reality is, when do you look at that phase? Just because it says November 4th on the calendar does not mean that everybody's comfortable with moving onward. So having a date, I think it's more important to have a date to reassess, a date to get together and look at all the metrics well before, a week or two before we are actually going to move from one phase to another. I don't want to, you know, not give a heads up to people, especially teachers and families. I think that it's important that we come up with some dates to meet, reassess, and give a week or two heads up before we move anyplace. and give a week or two heads up before we move anyplace. I think that and and Dr. Leclerc, I believe you said this. I just don't want to say something that isn't true. I believe that the vision, no matter what, is that you intend to have not only staff training, but then parent training on how to use technology and student training all during that period before we go remote. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I don't know why I have so much I will say that the staff training would be up through the fourteenth. And then the week of the fourteenth, we are planning on providing trainings to families. They will be able to get Chromebooks the week before, so they'll be able to pick them up, the machines, the week of the eighth. And then we'll be doing trainings or in open houses for families the week of the fourteenth.
Okay. And so you would get parents on a Zoom uh call just like this and you would take them through the technology and the programs. Is that correct?
Not me personally, but yeah.
Right. No, 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 you, the global you.
Andrea Marks.
Okay, um, all right.
Can I just um, can I just like point of clarification? The the purpose tonight is to vote on the plan that you want to start the year with. Not necessarily where you want to go after that. Because that can be tweaked as we move along. But the the goal tonight is to vote on the plan that we want to start the school year with. And and I think that you bring up a lot of great points. But if we're not having students come into the building, then then, you know, I think the air quality issue is kind of a moot point for that beginning because we're we're really talking about voting on what the s- the first plan is that to let families know how we're starting the school year.
And I agree with you, except that you're also talking about whether we go remote or hybrid. You're talking about having teachers come into buildings that may or may not be um safe in terms of air quality and bathrooms. So that was the only reason why I mentioned those. Because um if, just because students aren't there does not mean that I'm not worried about teachers. So that was that was the only reason why I brought those up. But yes, I I agree with you. We um are to vote on a plan. There is one other thing that I'm worried about in terms of picking plans. And that is that I want to make sure that, and I've said this before, that as we look at health metrics, we are looking not at just our town and our city, I mean. We are looking at all of the cities who we get and C-Tech students um back and forth from. And also a list of where our teachers are from, because all of that makes a difference. We don't live in a bubble. We live in a city where people come and go from many different areas. And we have to look at all those numbers. And so um mayor and Bree, I think Bree was on the call. But a- am I correct in assuming that you have a list of all the cities that we choice in from and uh receive from C-Tech um uh share classrooms with C-Tech and our teachers so that you're looking at all those cities? Or?
Question directed at me?
I was asking, uh, the mayor's been meeting with Bree, but I can e- either one of you could answer that.
I'm not sure the mayor has all the school choice.
Okay.
Cities and towns.
Okay.
A lot of other things, but she may not have that, but I have that.
Does Bree?
No, Bree does not have that.
Okay, so um that would be a a big concern for me. I think Bree should have a list of where we all come from. I I really don't want anybody just looking at at East Hampton. Mayor?
Um, so I I don't have, nor does uh Bree have the list of where everyone comes from. However, um we do have lists of what's happening with cases around um us. And and actually, it's on the the mass.gov covid nineteen. Every Wednesday, they go through each community and um county. And we definitely keep um track of that. So I mean, you could actually track every city in the Commonwealth. But you know, we're watching Hampden and Hampshire County, like really the four counties, but but Hampden, Hampshire, and kind of Franklin. So we're we're definitely looking at that from a public health standpoint. I also, I actually have a question for Allison. I I'm not sure um or what the update is. I know Charter was kind of giving us some or said they'd give us a some kind of a deal for internet for families who don't have it. And and I know we're talked about MiFi's and or or the hotspots. And Ashley was following up with the tech per uh like mobile providers. Have we heard anything back? And it might be a side conversation, but I just, I want to bring it up because I know you and Ashley have put some time and thought into it and and make sure the school committee and the parents know.
Yeah, I don't know. Ashley may have the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that. We did order more hotspots.
Great.
Oh, dear. Dr. Leclerc, you froze. Will let Lori talk? Do you want to mute yourself, Lori?
Yes, first I want to say that Shannon was having trouble with her technology, but she's trying to get back on. She sent me a text.
She should be getting it.
I want to go back to the tents because I love the tent idea for so many reasons. One, I've heard a lot, especially um about Pat Lennon's music program. And I know that he wants to be able to continue teaching instrumental music to, I believe, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty kids are in that program, which is phenomenal. And he wants to be able to do that in a remote way. And there are guidelines where bands are concerned. But I was thinking, even though the construction is going on at Whitebrook, if we were to have a tent either at Nanatac or in the in the high school fields, maybe he can do his remote practice sessions and give lessons and they could get together with the band. So it's another great way to use the tents. And I know Dr. Leclerc, when showing the schedule, said she wasn't looking at the specials. But I want to make sure that we think about all of those classes because art and music and drama and whatever we can provide kids who are going through these stressful times is going to help them get through it. So we have to look for ways to fit that into the schedule. Talking about technology, I also want to bring back what I what I mentioned the other day with the learning centers. Some of our families, and I said it earlier, they really don't have a good idea how to use the technology. So a learning center would be a place where they could drop in and get that support in a safe way, as well as having continual online support for people who know how to maneuver it. So thank you.
Great. No, I agree. So I I'm going to give my opinion and maybe you guys can talk me out of it. But I do not think that we are ready for hybrid. If I was to envision this year and how it would go forward, and I think that if we were to look at being as safe as we possibly can, I believe that um there's so much up in the air right now. And I I if please, for those who need in-person um learning, I believe we can do this. And I believe we can figure out and be creative and flexible to address as many needs as we can. I'm sure nothing's going to be perfect. But my belief is that we are not ready to go back into these buildings. We um we meet. We meet by Zoom. We don't have the air quality yet. Sarah, I see you in in a second. I will definitely call on you. Thank you. Do you want, do you need to jump in now before I talk?
I just wanted to
Say that again?
Allison had lost her internet, so she texted me that she's trying to come back in.
Right, right.
You know, we're watching for her. As soon as she pops up in the waiting room, we'll let her in.
Thank you. Yeah, we saw her freeze, so. So i- if I was to to see the safest way to begin the year, it would be to begin um with really strong um professional development with our teachers, then reach out to our students and families and train them. I would love to see an opportunity, if we could and parents were willing, for the small children to meet their teachers in a tent. Lori and I really are very strongly um in agreement that if you're in the fresh air, you might feel a lot safer. Teachers would and kids about meeting their teachers. And the benefit of that is that later on, when you do go remote with our younger kids, it's going to be easier because they already have a face. They already have somebody that they've um reached out to. But I definitely believe we need to start remote. And my concern is we are thinking that in November or December, we're going to be hybrid. And my worry is that we are most likely going to have to close on the dime because they are expecting numbers to rise in November, summer. So the winter is not time when I see a hybrid. If I was going to see us go into any kind of hybrid, I would see it possible in the spring using tents to teach outdoors. And that for me, that would be the safest thing for our families and our teachers. I and that's going to inconvenience people. And and I think that we do the best we can with our special populations, but also our essential workers. This is a crazy time. We have people who have to go to work. We have people who may have special circumstances where their children need to be in person. And if we can manage that, we address that. But for the majority of our teachers and our students, I think the only thing we can do is go remote until the numbers come down, until it is safe enough to teach in the spring, hopefully, in tents. I'll be quiet now for a minute. Anybody want to chime in?
I could. Default to anybody else who wants to.
I think you should.
So following up to what you're saying, Cindy, just thinking back to um for when this all began, um I looked at this as an opportunity, a rare opportunity, to sort of pause in this hectic and fast-paced world that we live in and turn inwards and reflect. And um I was really appreciative for the opportunity to do that. And one thing that I've sort of come out of uh that experience with is the uh importance of um trying to slow down a little bit in the way that we act, the way that we make decisions. Not just our district, but just as humans in general. Um I think it's easy to forget uh that, you know, several dec- you know, less than a century ago, we were not all connected in the way that we are now. And information didn't travel the way that it did. And people didn't make decisions the way that we do now. And um I think that there's great value in sort of returning to that way of thinking that, you know, true transformative transformative change takes time. Success is something that is measured over time. And that um one year, as impactful as it is on these students in this moment, is ultimately just one year in the grand scheme of things. I don't know that I know the best time for students to come back. So in hearing, you know, the the request from Dr. Leclerc that we sort of focus on deciding how we start this year, um I think, you know, I think the answer there is clear from from my perspective. And then it really becomes a question of how do we continue to approach decision-making as we move forward? I appreciate having the sort of goalposts to check in at. I would be very cautious not to use those as reasons to push forward no matter what. Um I don't think that that's anybody's intention by any means. But I think taking a careful and cautious approach and feeling like we're not rushing something is of utmost importance. Um I will say regarding uh teaching outside in tents, I believe that um these ideas that you've expressed, especially with having the younger children come out, is in fact something that is happening at some schools, including, I believe, the Charter School within our city. So I think that that's something that we should definitely be taking a look at to serve those kids. To all of the folks who um feel strongly that a remote model is not going to serve your family, especially if that's based off of this past spring, I implore everyone to uh remember that we are approaching this with so much more deliberation and um thought than we were able to before. And I firmly believe that our teachers are going to be in a position to provide uh much better support and education than they did uh in the previous experience. And I think that it really falls to the district and to those of us who are stakeholders here in the community to support those families. And that we need to do what's right uh for the community as a whole. And then making sure those folks don't fall through the cracks is something that we can do in addition to the overall um good that we're trying to pursue for everyone. Those are my thoughts. Right, the second? Maybe I'll chime in again.
Jonathan, can I just chime in on that? And then, sorry, mayor, um but I just want to reinforce what you're saying. Teachers are lifelong learners. We want our students to be lifelong learners. I don't believe there is a single teacher who does not want to do better than when we taught in a crisis. And I believe that if given the opportunity to do some really nice um creative thinking and team building, I I I think it's going to be very different, the remote than than what we saw. I know myself, when we left, we had to change so quickly and everybody was working so many hours to figure out how they were going to turn it around. And there wasn't the time to do that planning. And I think that people have been thinking about this and racking their brains and we're fitting in the amount of time it is to grow. So I feel really good and I hope people realize that I think it's going to be a much stronger remote teaching experience. Mayor? You're on mute. You're on mute.
So one, I I've been turning my my screen on and off because um President Connet always tells us to turn our screen off so people don't get kicked off. And two, around the tents, uh we did tents at City Hall and and they weren't strong enough. So we actually have stronger tents coming in, we hope, in the next week. So if if it all helps for that to be a pilot uh place, we will have two tents at Fifty Pace and with with sides. And of course, you know, our students and parents and teachers can can use that. But um yeah, I just, when we did use the tents for appointments and uh small gatherings, they they worked very, very well. And and you just scheduled them like rooms in City Hall. So we hope to have bigger, better tents up in the next eight days. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori? Mayor and Shannon? Mayor?
Yeah, so I'll just, I mean, I think there's a lot of been different thoughts that have certainly been put into this. I would say that in my opinion, I do think that we need to go beyond just deciding what September fourteenth looks like. I do think that we want to um, you know, put forward a more thorough plan, sort of more along the lines of what Dr. Claire has put forward and sort of agreeing to a couple phases in so that that's sort of set, not set in stone, as we've all said, because the metrics will change and we need to be checking in prior to each of those stage changes to confirm that we're ready to actually make that change. But I do think it's helpful to set some of those bars in place. But I do think it's helpful to set some of those bars in place with timelines, tentative timelines. One of the other things that I'd like to speak to is that sort of first stage that is the first stage of, you know, after full remote, after everybody's 100% remote, that next group of people that will be coming in. I think that in that group where we're still considered a remote model, it's still, some populations are starting to come in. I think that we really need to look at who gets included in that list. From an equity and privacy standpoint, it can't just be students on IEPs or things like that. It has to be more open-ended than that. And I think that that is a place where we can open it up. We can determine grade by grade what is the right number of students to bring in and cap it at that acceptable number that we can decide, not tonight, but at a future night. And thereby allow for students to, obviously, first categories would be going to those groups that have been earmarked as special populations by DESI. But then also open up any additional seats to parents who have our essential workers or single parents working, situations that might ask them to be able to enter into like a lottery situation that would allow them then to be able to get their child into that sort of next stage of still remote, but a certain group of population coming into schools.
Yep. Lori? Oh, John? Jonathan?
That's okay, Lori.
Just one quick thing. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to go, Jonathan?
Well, it was just related to Maren. Is yours also?
Okay, kind of, but you go.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say, because, and correct me if I'm wrong. So I think as a part of that first group of special populations, I feel like there was some concern about, you know, where do we sort of draw the line about opening it up to new folks? And I saw that in the plan that was proposed, within those special populations, we're also including some other groups sort of of our choosing, specifically the incoming classes for each of the schools to help those students get acclimated, right? And I feel like that almost seems like sort of a way to give us a little bit of wiggle room to then also introduce some of the other students that really have, you know, the need at home to come into school. And Maren, do you feel like that? Do you feel like that sort of addresses what you're speaking to?
Yeah, just to say, no, I don't actually agree with the way that it's been presented. On Monday, it was presented that we would sort of have all of the pre-K, all of the K, all of the fifth grade, all of the ninth grade. No, I don't think that we are set up for that for our teachers, for our systems. I don't think we're ready to sort of make that big of a leap. I think it's more looking at a very small number. And this is where we have to get into the details of students and knowing who's going to be able to come in and then figuring out from that group what's the right number to allow. And, you know, it's just going to be a handful of additional students that we might be able to open up for a lottery per grade. But we'd have like, you know, one teacher teaching in for fifth grade, for sixth grade, for seventh grade, something like that. I think that there's a way to sort of open it up. It's sort of, it also sort of has, I mean, the inclusive education model is supposed to have a variety of students anyway in this situation. So that is what I am suggesting, is looking at that in a way that would be across all the grades, but a very limited number of students.
Lori?
I'd still like to see the youngest kids get in early, just to have that contact and familiarity with their teachers. And we've spoken a lot about tents, but have we talked about the pavilions that are at Non-Tuck? Because, Mayor, how many pavilions are there that are very sturdy structures? Like four at least?
I was just going to say, there are four. There's the Rotary one. You know, I mean, the Rotary, like the Rotary Club. But there are a couple. And they've been used for Camp Non-Tuck, which didn't happen this, which didn't happen this summer, but in the past, you know, kids have been using them and their bathrooms and all pretty, pretty close, so.
I'm just trying to think of ways that we can really make it work, starting September 14th, to have a significant population, whether it be the kids with needs. Maybe they need to come in also. Maybe we shouldn't be waiting till October. And even if there's bad weather or something, once they've come in and if they have to go remote and come back, at least we've made that contact in a safe way.
I just want to add one logistical thing to Non-Tuck Park, and I know we're talking about it. It would be, I think it would approve us to go, we need to connect with the Parks Commission and Director John Mason. Cindy and I spoke about that, and I know it was premature at that point, but I just want to kind of say it in the public forum. Director Mason is aware of maybe that ask coming, but to talk through logistics with the Parks Commission and with Director Mason. So whatever is the outcome of this meeting.
Thank you. And I agree. We've got a lot of work to do. I, so here's my thinking, just so you know where I'm going. I think we just need to go to remote. I think that hybrid goes on the back burner until it's safe. I think having a hybrid plan that can start in tents in the spring. You know, if a miracle happened and we started in remote and then suddenly went, wow, the world is perfect and we can all get back in the building, you start with hybrid ahead of time. But my true belief right now is that we have really no other decision to make for safety for our youth, but to go remote and then do all the creative, flexible planning that Maren and Lori and all the parents and everyone has talked about so that we can support those people and kids who really need that support. Here's what I just want to remind everybody of. We're having a conversation about whether or not to start putting teachers and kids in the building. And Governor Baker just rolled back outdoor gatherings to 50. So that gives you an idea of where we are trending right now. We are not getting better. We are not in a position where we should be saying, oh, it's time to get into a building. I think that we are, our numbers are growing. And until they stop growing and they turn back the other way, I think, I can't say it enough. I think that I would much rather we spend our time reaching out to those kids that need support and giving our teachers time to work really creatively and safely to provide an education to our kids. Any other discussion? Are we ready to? I mean, I'm... Anybody want to say anything? Or are we ready to kind of start to vote? Jonathan, you raised your hand. Are you thinking?
It seems like we're probably moving towards being ready to vote. And I guess I feel like the one question that's still up in the air for me is sort of the goalposts that we've set for ourselves. And I guess, you know, they are set with our current understanding of the landscape of the pandemic because that's all we have to go on. And as you're saying, Cindy, it's looking like it's heading in a direction that we wouldn't want it to head to, to move forward with the plans that we want. So I guess my question to everyone is, you know, keeping in mind that we have these benchmarks to help us in our planning along the way, do we feel comfortable with the dates as they've been set? Or is that something that we feel like should be looked at further in our conversation? Other than that, I feel like we're moving towards a vote.
So I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I like the idea of getting special populations in earlier, not later. I think the quicker that we can start providing services to these students, the better. However, I, in terms of those dates, I really believe that I would much rather we say something like this. We call it Phase One, which is train. Phase Two, which is get, address our special populations. And we stay in remote until we finally decide that those numbers are right. Then we begin with hybrid. And I, I don't have a problem with every 30 days, every, I'd rather 45 to watch trends. But I would be, I would listen to anybody who, you know, wanted it earlier than that. But I seriously, I think putting dates on these phases is kind of like, so my personal vision, and I could be wrong, but my personal vision is we can't look at hybrid till the spring. That winter is going to be tough on us and we're all going to be in remote. In fact, every school I've ever talked to so far, all along, we're expecting to be in remote in the winter. So we're talking about maybe getting a few weeks in the late fall of hybrid. And then we're going to be remote anyway. So that just seems like so much chaos to me. In terms of learning, I would rather come with something that is steady for children to get used to. And they would know that when the time is right, then we're going to start to build. The idea of just pushing some arbitrary date to, you know, begin hybrid, I just, I can't see it happening. And talk me out of it, but I don't think it's safe. And I think it makes it difficult for kids to have the structure and the routine that they need. Lori, you're a teacher. Talk me out of it.
I'm not going to talk you out of it, Cindy. I'm not. But I have said all along, we are East Hampton. We are East Hampton strong. We don't have to call it anything. We're calling it East Hampton, starting remote, doing what's best for our students. If we have Cohort C coming in when it's best for them, that's our model. If we can get those pre-K through too, in a healthy situation where teachers feel healthy doing it, then we'll do that. But I don't, I hate just term, the term hybrid or remote, it's all mixed up. We have to do what's best. So I also agree that we can't give a date when it's going to be safe to go into a hybrid because we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen next week. The numbers are changing. So, but we have to give parents an idea of what they can expect. We have to give students an idea of what they can expect. And I think if we say, we'll get you into the classroom into a hybrid model, as soon as it's safe, it's better than saying, we're going to wait till the spring. Because if the metrics change, if we get a miracle vaccine quicker than Dr. Fauci thinks is possible, then we'll get there sooner. So tell people when it is safe for everybody. That's when we're going to make the moves.
I agree. I don't like dates. I just think that, because what happens is you get to that date and somebody's going to be disappointed because you see that date and you think, oh, okay, it's automatically going to change and then it doesn't because the metrics didn't change. So I agree. I don't mind Phase One, Two, Three, or whatever, but I don't want to... I don't think we need those dates. Shannon, what are you thinking?
I've been trying to tell you for like the last half hour.
Well, you were on the other page and you flipped out, you lost your mic, and now I'm dying to hear.
No, actually, I lost my whole computer because I tripped.
I know. So don't blame us.
So I, I agree with a lot of what all of you guys are saying. We really need to go remote, for sure, in the beginning. I'm concerned about the switch to hybrid for the special populations. I mean, you guys know that's, that's one of my biggest concerns. I haven't heard too many plans, which makes me a little bit nervous. I know Sarah is working diligently, along with the rest of the admin team. Of course, I don't, I agree with you, Cindy. I don't want to set dates. You know, I like the phases and I also, I still like, I know we're not getting into details right now, but I don't want to see anybody in any of the other schools except for EHS. And, you know, there's, there's got to be a way that we can, we can work on that as well. The other schools, just as far as I'm concerned, aren't safe. You know, I, I've heard so much and listened to so much and we're not going to make a, we're not going to, please, everybody, we can't. And, but we have to do what's the safest. And I think definitely remote, you know, eventually going hybrid. And I agree with you, Cindy, it's probably going to be after January. I really don't see us going full hybrid before then. And I, I feel like we're all kind of in agreement on that. Maren shaking his head no.
Yeah, I think that dates are helpful. From a management perspective, if you just say, yeah, we'll get there at some point, it's always something to push down the line. If you say, by this date, this is where we have to make a decision about whether or not we're going to go to the next phase, then we have some clarity about what we're trying to do. I'm definitely not saying that like November 4th, no matter what, we're doing this. It's just putting a date on the schedule that says, this is where we're trying to make this transition. It gives everybody clarity about that. And then we also set forward parameters of when we're going to move to actually make that decision about whether or not that's still correct or not. It can be two weeks out, it can be three weeks out, whatever we need to do to make a clear decision, but it gives clarity about what we're trying to do.
So Maren, what if we instead of called them, I mean, Dr. Leclerc has a date next to each phase. Why don't we just set up reassessment dates? I would rather see that, not attached to a phase. Where are we? How's it going? What are the numbers? And just continually have a reassessment date. Mayor, you haven't spoken in a while. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
I, I agree with, with Maren around having dates to review. When we worked as a part of the reopening team for economics, one of the frustrations that we had going back and forth was dates. And even now, going back, you know, 2020, like to have had dates, not necessarily we automatic jump to the next phase, but everybody knew on, you know, October 14th or October 1st, there would be a reassessment. And I think that's important when we're talking about routine and predictability, to have that public conversation around a date and see where we are. And that said, with Dr. Leclerc's plan and all the work the staff has done, I, I think they mean the same thing. Like I, but, but I do. Maren has a very good point where we should have a date. And on that date, it is reassessed. Also, our staff and our public health experts will know that that date's coming up and they can prepare for it. I can prepare for it and give updates on HVAC and those sort of things, so.
So
Oh, sorry.
Maybe I can put forward something then that would be not a proposal yet because we're not there yet, but at least something then that gives us a framework to move forward if that's, if this sort of concept is, is possible. So I think we're all saying, certainly, we're all in agreement, from what I'm hearing, everyone, in terms of starting remote. So Phase One, the way Dr. Leclerc put in, was the dates of professional development for the teachers going until the 11th or whatever that is, yes, the 11th. September 11th will be the last day of Phase One. So Phase Two, when schools actually open and students come to the school, start remote classes, fully 100% remote, nobody's in the buildings, nothing like that's happening, that's Phase Two. So that was to start on September 14th. So that was to start on September 14th. Our next school committee meeting after that is on September 22nd. So it's a, we would be a week and two days into the new school year. We'd be able to have an assessment of where we stood. We could be looking at that, that would potentially be, you know, that right there would be three weeks out from when we went, or at least right now is being proposed by Dr. Leclerc to be going to that next phase of Remote Plus. And so then that would be an opportunity to sort of really look at the numbers, get a sense of where we stand with plenty of time to really assess and give us another, whole nother meeting before we had to make a final decision. But we'd be able to have a presentation about, look at the health metrics on the 22nd. And that would then help us whether or not to know whether we would move forward to the Phase Two, Phase Three, where we would have Remote Plus with students in there.
And then we stay with Remote Plus and we don't put a date on Hybrid until first change. Is that what you're saying?
I'm okay with that. I think that, yeah, I mean, I think that that first step, we need, we need to put in place a date that we start of move. And that tentatively we're saying, I mean, and that could be, I think that either the four weeks that Dr. Leclerc is putting forward, which would be on the 13th, or if we were to put six weeks and say it would be the 26th, I would be okay with either of those two dates as sort of our, you know, tentative changeover from 100% remote to remote with some populations coming into school. And then yes, leaving the hybrid
With no date.
On the Phase Four is, you know, is down the line is, you know, and we have to get to Phase Three in order to even be able to start discussing when we might put a date on Phase Four.
Lori?
I'd still like to get that pre-K through two and Phase Two. It keeps on escaping us in the conversation.
Right.
How did the rest of you feel about that?
I didn't forget about that. I like.
Okay, no, but I'm just asking the rest. I know you like it.
They're the most disgusting group of students. With the most amount of germs, et cetera. I don't think now is the time.
Lori meant though, that Lori was thinking we're talking just like a short meet and greet in tents, in open air. Is that correct? We're not talking.
Being them back into school.
No, 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 not back into school.
No, I never said back into school. I said in a social gathering outside, in a safe way, so they can meet their teachers. I just feel so bad for the little ones.
They will meet their teachers.
For the big ones.
They'll meet their teachers remotely via Zoom and they can set up one-on-ones if they need it. But having all of that group and then trying to tell five-year-olds, stay right there, you gotta be six feet apart. Like that, that's more traumatic than just saying, this is, that's just not the experience you're having right now. And it's really harmful. I mean, I can't imagine being at that stage and missing that opportunity. I totally understand why we would want to have that for our youngest population, but I just think that the amount of no's you're going to have to say is not the way that we want to have them experiencing school. With schools best through positive reinforcements with that age group, not through all the negatives. So any opportunity to get in person is going to have too many negatives.
And their germy.
My, my thinking is I wonder if that is, if that line of thinking could sort of be folded into this idea of remote learning centers where here we have this special population in a way that has additional needs beyond what the normal population, what their older peers have. So do we look at ways that outside, in safe ways, can we support them by, you know, putting these additional structures in place? And I wonder if that would be the direction for that conversation that people can get behind.
The other thing, you know, Maren was talking about having kids meet their, they will meet their teachers remotely. I think it's really important for the, once we begin the year, one of the nicest things that I heard that I thought was great, and, and I really have appreciated, tonight there were 215 people on this phone call. And I really, I, I'm so encouraged by the amount of caring parents and teachers who have diligently sat in. I think one of the things I heard was let's set up focus groups. To focus groups with teachers and parents to actually talk about what's going right and what isn't going right. This, I know it's crazy and I don't want to overwhelm either the administrators or the teachers, but we are all changing daily. We're watching the news, we're, we're adapting all the things that we do. And I think it's really, I thought it was great, the idea of focus groups to get a sense of how's it going? And that person who, each person who is in that focus group's job would be to find out from other families and other teachers how it's going. But I think that we have to, the one thing we've learned here in this unbelievable phone call, Zoom call, is that we need to communicate and we need to hear from everybody in order to guide our decisions. So I loved the idea of focus groups. And I think instead of us deciding, I think that those focus groups would guide those decisions and make those recommendations to us and to Dr. Leclerc. And they would help to guide those decisions. You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
I know what you mean because I,
Yeah, yeah.
I really wanted to see those little kids in a way they could start school with excitement. But then when I saw all the thumbs going up when you were saying their germy and don't bring them together and all that, like I, I do listen.
I have thumbs up for that.
But the, the reason that I was saying that I'd like to see that because I did hear from parents and I heard from parents of young children, parents that I know very well, and they were asking me to create that. So having focus groups to be able to get more information from our community is what we need to do. Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, as, as far as the, I mean, I think all remote is, is the best choice. And the conversation around tents and, and groups and people I think can be fueled by more, you know, public input, input. But also, like was said earlier during public speak and, and is proven by the work that Superintendent Leclerc and her team have done and our teachers, we can trust our teachers once they're given, you know, the results of this vote. I, I feel very confident they're going to be creative. They're experts in the developmental, you know, curve of each grade and, and needs of our students. And, and I do, I, I feel that, that our team will, will just step up and do that. I don't, um, I was going to say, I don't, I don't want to micro-manage that because one, I'm not an educator, I know. And then, but that, I know there are educators on the, on the school board. But, but for me, I, you know, know what you know and know what you don't know and let somebody else, you know, let the experts. And that, we have a lot of experts around that, so.
I agree. But I really liked this focus group idea. And I just think that, that we need to do more of it and we need to, you know, let everybody at least weigh in somehow. Somebody else, a lot of quotes I wrote down tonight, let us have a seat at the table. And that really resonated with me because I've seen the commitment and I believe everybody deserves some sort of seat at the table and I think we can manage it. All right. So everybody really, I'm wondering if everybody is comfortable making a proposal. Should I say it or?
I vote Jonathan or Maren do it. They're really good at it.
I would love to try if that's okay.
Not Jonathan.
I mean, if, but.
We can fine tune it.
No, Maren, I see you.
Can I just, I mean, I just, so before we actually say the proposal though, I don't feel like we've had enough conversation about who might make up that group that we're starting the sort of Remote Plus plan with. And I don't know if we need to do that tonight or if we want to give room for that to be a conversation in the future. But I feel like, I think we are in agreement. I think Jonathan go forward with the proposal. But I think that piece of defining that group of who would be starting and whether it's four weeks or six weeks, I don't know if we're clear on that yet either. So I just might say we might want to have a little bit more conversation before we go to proposal on those, or we can do it afterwards. I don't know.
Right. I'm flexible either way. I think we could, and Lori's hands up in a second. I think we could do both of those at a later date. Or we could do, we could start to at least get a backbone tonight. I, I'm totally flexible and it's fairly early, believe it or not. It's not midnight. Lori?
Part of that Cohort C has been defined by Desi, so we know that. And we're really just adding on, as far as I can see, to the working parents who can't be teaching. And I really liked your idea, Maren. If we see that the numbers are really big, then we do a lottery. We also have to be able to staff the students who are going to be there. And we have to get a read on our teachers, who is willing to do that. And that's all part of bargaining. But as I said, the remote learning centers, those do not have to be teachers. They can be other people in the community or the school community as long as we go through the Cory process.
Yeah, that's a really nice clarification because poor Dr. Leclerc is probably sitting there saying, what are you roping me into? She's not on my front page right now because she came back. There's eight pages here. So I can't.
Jonathan, you have to say something.
But.
Can I, can I, can I ask? Can I talk?
There you are.
There I am. I'm here. I'm lurking somewhere on page eight. Yeah, so, yeah, I do, I do have concerns about the, the, the learning centers. That's a bigger conversation, you know? I have safety concerns if I don't have school staff there, licensed teachers that have been fingerprinted and, you know, Cory checked and all the things. You know, I'm not sure I want to put, and this is no disrespect, but I'm not sure I want to put a college student in charge of a group of young kids with needs, a lot of needs, you know, at a remote setting. You know, there's, there's a lot of things I need to wrap my head around on that. I'm not saying it's insurmountable. I'm just saying I think it's more a conversation than what can happen in the context of this meeting. And I would reiterate, Lori Garcia is exactly right. The groups that we have specified for being prioritized to come into the building are part of the requirements from Desi. So, you know, if we add something to that, again, that's dependent on staffing that I have available. That's dependent on how much, the spaces I can utilize. And if they're appropriate or not, I may, you know, if I have specialized populations coming in, I may put them all at one building that is deemed safe by the mayor rather than spread them out. But if I start adding more students, that may necessitate a larger conversation. And then there are other factors, plus we're still in negotiations with teachers. So that's still kind of up in the air for me. I do like what Maren said. Phase, you could, you could absolutely make a motion tonight that has Phase One and Phase Two as we've articulated them. I don't think there are any changes in those two phases. And as Maren points out, we could utilize, we could, I could add in the date of September 22nd for the school committee meeting as a metric, as a health metric check-in. That's something that can be added into that phase. And then the Remote Plus kind of phase, Phase Three could be at that October date that we've identified or if we want to push it out a week or two. Again, that's flexible. And, you know, we could even just say the Remote Plus will start after in a, you know, an approved period of time that the school committee deems the health metrics are appropriate. And we could say that we're going to check the health metrics every, every school committee meeting every two weeks. And then you'll make, you'll put a date to Phase Three and Phase Four. So I'm fine with that. But again, just a reminder, your job tonight is to vote on the plan to start the school year with. So that's the actual motion that I need.
Right, but the problem I'm having is, is I don't feel comfortable voting on a remote plan. I, I mean, a hybrid plan. I believe that we have to hold on to a remote plan until it is safe enough to have a hybrid. So, I.
But I don't think the phased-in plan that I'm presenting contradicts the statement you made. Because if it's not safe, then we don't move to a hybrid. And as, as Maren has articulated, we can move the guideposts. You know, we can, we can do the check-in.
I don't want a date for Phase Four for a hybrid. I don't.
That's fine.
Here because.
We can put, we can put TBD, to be determined.
Okay, I could do that.
Okay, Lori, sorry.
I just have to make a quick statement about the learning centers because when I originally brought them up, it wasn't even in the tent. I was thinking the high school would be a good place. And I also think that if the college students were to be hired, it would be under the direct supervision of somebody that works for the school. I don't want people to go around saying Lori Garcia wants to throw our kids in, non-attack with someone we don't know. I never said that, so thanks.
Real, if I can just ask for a point of clarification. So there are these specific groups that Desi has determined that, you know, we're talking about bringing in for Phase Three. But we are also in this plan that was presented, including some additional students into that. So I just, I guess I want to make that clear. And I'm, I'm hearing your concerns, Maren. I think that, you know, trying to bring in those entire grades in that moment is maybe not totally, well, we don't know if it's going to be feasible or not. But, so I, I am correct in my understanding though, that we have additional groups that we're.
No, no. That was in an earlier version of the plan.
Okay.
What I presented tonight did not have the extra groups.
Gotcha.
Right, but, okay, so let me, why do we have to, when we talk about special populations and addressing special populations, why do we have to have the words hybrid plan in there? Why can't we simply say as our proposal that we will begin the year remote? We have phases in this plan, the remote plan, and that we will remain in remote until such time that it is safe to go hybrid? And can't we know that we are going to be addressing special populations as fast as we can? I don't think you need to say special populations hybrid plan because to me this is confusing. I would rather tell people, we're in remote and we're stuck there until it's safe. Maren and Lori.
Lori?
So, go ahead.
No, you can go, Maren.
I don't have the, the, what she sent to us in front of me at this moment. But I think that, and I was going to bring it up here real quick, but it is a remote plan. So Phase Three, the way Dr. Leclerc's thing put forward is that we are still in a remote model for Phase Three. So yes, I agree that the language here is not how I would have written it. You know, I think that if we're putting our forward plan, the hybrid model for the way I've understood from the very beginning meant that every student who wanted to be available to come to a school building could come to a school building. And that's not what we're agreeing to as Phase Three. Phase Three, we're agreeing to special populations. And the reason why, I'll just say what, let's say again, why I think we should. And the reason why, I'll just say what, let's say again, why I think we should say that we want to have a larger grouping of students available to come to that special populations grouping is because, because if we say it tonight, then we can start having Dr. Leclerc's team to look at the numbers, to go grade by grade and looking at who's already fitting into those populations that are required by Desi and where might we want to have space to open up to allow additional people to come in. So that's why I would like to include that in tonight's decision so that we can have them start to do the deeper research on it and we can decide where we want to go for the future, at a future meeting.
Right, and I think, Dr. Leclerc, we understand that this is part of staffing needs. But if, I agree with Maren, if we don't put it, if we don't put the bar here, we're never going to hit the bar, you know? And if, if we want to look at who also could be included, then I think we need to, we need to address that. Lori?
I don't want to be repetitive, but I keep saying we don't need to call it hybrid. Let's call it remote plus, remote plus plus, East Hampton remote plus. And then we'll talk about hybrid another time.
That feels better for me. It really does. Because I just think it's a clearer message to teachers and students and family members. And when we get to the plus, that it might even be a little bit different.
So if, can I just ask, just for clarity? So if I understand you correctly, phase two will be remote and then phase three will be remote plus. And then phase four will be to be determined.
Correct. And we won't call it that either.
Well, phase four is hybrid, but it's just, the date is to be determined.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you. No, I'm fine with that. I can make those changes.
And I apologize for overlooking that change in the document. I just went back.
No, that's fine.
You didn't actually move that.
So we're, we're changing the words to remote plus. This is, as, we're going to let you make the proposal, but I just want to make sure we know. We're changing it to remote plus. And we're going to, I think we need to make a statement that we remain in remote plus until such time as it is safe to begin a hybrid move.
Would you agree that that is sort of insinuated by not putting a date on it? Or do you want it, I'm just trying to craft what I'm going to say.
I, I really believe we need to boldly say that because.
I thought we were going to say at each school committee, we're going to review.
Did I miss it? Committee meeting, but we certainly should be getting updates and figuring it out, yes. So.
I think that's what Allison said, and then we would decide if we were ready to move to the next phase.
So do you feel like that needs to be built into the motion? Or is that something we can sort of request as a committee, just to have kind of?
Request what? Say it again.
The, the, a moment to reflect on the metrics at each of our meetings, basically. Is that something that you could just sort of fold into the, the agenda?
So I think it needs to be part of the remote plus plan, that we are going to do a number of things. We're going to get information from Bree. We are going to have, I would like to see focus groups, if that's possible, to just see how things are going. But that's kind of fine tuning it, but at least, I'm losing track of where I'm going.
Can we call the focus group partnership groups? My 26-year-old said that's the term you use nowadays. They're partnership groups.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going remote, we're going to stay in remote till we go to remote plus, correct? And we will stay in remote until it is safe to begin a hybrid plan. Is that what we're trying to put as a, we're just plain and simple in remote plus? Is that what we're trying to say for your motion for?
Essentially, and my understanding is that September 22nd meeting sounds like a good kind of goalpost for us to kind of have this conversation anew. That's my understanding. Okay.
I think we're ready.
So I would like to make a motion that first and foremost, we begin the school year in a remote setting with teachers being given the opportunity, as presented in phase one, for training before students arrive. And then moving into phase two, where all students will be learning remotely. In that motion, we have a tentative date for phase three, moving to remote plus on October 9th. But with the intention of the school committee to, at our September 22nd meeting, to reassess the metrics and sort of determine that, that date still meets the health needs of our community.
And that we'll stay in.
And that we will stay in remote plus until a date to be determined when the health metrics suggest it is safe to do so.
Maren?
Just to correct one thing you said, otherwise excellent job, Jonathan, for reiterating all that stuff. The October day, October 9th date is when phase two would end. October 13th is when, when phase three would start, because that's actually after the holiday. So it's a Tuesday after the three-day weekend.
Thank you for that correction.
But somewhere in that, shouldn't we just be saying, it's going to be determined as we?
We're putting a date on it, Cindy, and we put a date on when we want to review it and say whether or not we're actually moving it into or not. That's, again, that's my opinion and it's my recommendation.
And that's also just a date for moving into remote plus, not a date for moving in.
Right, right. No, I know.
I second that.
All right, any discussion before we vote? All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
David.
Aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye, see, yes.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cindy Krasinski, aye. Motion passes. We've, we've kind of rephrased the whole thing, but we, we got something done.
We beat Northampton. We're not in competition.
Yeah.
So just to reiterate to the other piece of this was that we do want to look and dive into the details of what that remote plus would be, looking at specific numbers in negotiations with the teachers union, understanding how many teachers might be in schools. So whether we can have one class or two classes per grade and looking at how many people are already in the required special populations by Desi. And then what other numbers might be available. And then we should probably be putting this out to parents, I would say, before the end of August so that they can actually be putting their names forward. If there is a potential for a lottery, to put themselves into that lottery to be able to get an additional space. So I would just put that forward, that we still need to get with Dr. Leclerc's team to do some work and do some report back to us in two weeks or something like that.
Don't we have to get the negotiations straightened out first?
It's all, I mean, yes, all of those things. But we can be doing the research and doing the exact number dig in the meantime. That's my request.
So what do you want to do with that request?
I guess I'd ask Sue and Allison if we needed an actual proposal on that or if that's already enough of a directive to be able to start doing that research. It's not a decision. It's just to, to get numbers and information for a future school committee meeting.
Why do you think so?
It's a request for information. Yeah, as long, as long as the chair, the chair approves, I think it's okay.
So do you approve, Cindy?
I think, I think a request for information has to go through you. I could be wrong. Correct me.
Does it have to go through me, a request for information?
It should if the committee's asking for it, yes.
Okay, we have my approval.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Chairman.
You're always going to have that. You're always going to have that. The more communication, the better. So do we need any more proposals tonight? We made the big one. We're going remote and remote plus. I feel really good about that. I know it doesn't please everybody, but I think, I think it is our safest option. And I think hearing our teachers and a lot of our families, they're going to be happy and relax and maybe breathe a little. I think we can all breathe. Do we have any other proposals to make? Do we need to, I mean, we have a lot of things that we are tossing out to Dr. Leclerc. I want to know what those numbers are. I want to, because we can't make those decisions unless we have those numbers that, that Bree gives Dr. Leclerc. I know we'll all do our own research, but I want to make sure we have that. And I really think that we have to have these partnership groups, Lori. So I, what I'm wondering is, do we need to make a kind of proposal to ask Dr. Leclerc to form them if we can? Maren?
I guess I would put forward that I don't, since those things are not actually on our agenda and we're meeting on Tuesday, and, I mean, the question is, are we, you've put forward questions about meetings on Mondays and Tuesdays. So I would put forward that we don't necessarily need to meet on Monday, that we meet on Tuesday and then we put that on our agenda for a discussion. And it could come out of a proposal out of that at that point. But I don't think we need to go any further with it now.
Sounds good. So that.
Point, though.
That, that's.
Sue. The agenda's done.
Oh, the agenda's done.
Agenda's done, yes.
Okay, well, it's other business.
Well, still, it is other business, but the other is, I also see it as part of the reopening plan. Because as we reopen, so I don't see it as a separate item that we couldn't cover either tonight or, and I'm totally okay with covering it next Tuesday. But the point is, it's part of the reopening plan. Because it is going to be a part of guiding where we go from here. So I, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't see it as falling outside the parameters of a reopening plan.
No, you're correct.
Okay, good. All right. But that does answer my last question. It sounds like we don't need a work session next Monday and we can all take a breather. Okay? So I, I really, I could use a breather and I think Dr. Leclerc could use one. So that answers my next question. I think we, we wait till next Tuesday to meet. Is there anything anybody wants to talk about? Otherwise, does someone want to, again, I thank everybody. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Before I even ask if anybody wants to adjourn, I, I, our school committee, I will tell you, is, they're rock stars. Everybody is working and researching and thinking and rethinking constantly. I know that when I was on the collaborative, I talked to other school committees and not every school committee works as well as we do as a team. And I appreciate it. Not every school committee member cares so much about showing up and being informed and doing our very best. And I really am so thrilled to be working with you guys and I just thank you for your hard work. I do thank Dr. Leclerc and I thank all the principals and assistant principals, everybody who's on designing these plans. I know that your heart and soul went into it. I know that, you know, you're doing your very best under really hard circumstances. And I thank your entire team, all our teachers, everybody who's been pulling. And I think, lastly, I thank the, the parents and the students who are writing through this. It's a really hard time and I am really grateful that we have such an incredible community. So, thank you. Thank you all. And does anybody else want to say anything and do we want a motion to adjourn? Okay, we have lots of people who want to say something. Lori, Mayor?
I wanted to thank you, Cindy, for everything you're doing as Chair of the School Committee, so. And I also want to thank the community, the teachers, the parents, and all the emails. We read every single one of them. So please keep them coming because you see, we're going to have these partnership groups and you people are going to be our partners. So send us emails and let us know what you want to continue to be involved with as we move forward. Thank you.
Maren?
Ditto on Lori. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for, for all you are. Thank you.
If I can just say one little thing, again, I like to just keep us on target for what our purview is, though. We are, the school committee is not involved with the minutia of determining how teachers are communicating or what their exact curriculum is or how they're, you know, using Zoom to interact with their teach, with their students and stuff like that. So those are all great things and I appreciate the idea of, you know, a partners group to be able to give feedback into the curriculum director and other teachers and stuff. But that's not really, you know, so email us, give us feedback, but that, that's not our purview, though. I just want to say that as we're closing out on a Friday night at 9:30 at night.
That is true. We do not dictate how they teach and how they put the workings of education together. We just work on policies, so. But during this time, I think the reason why we're so involved is because this has never happened before, where there's a pandemic that closes down all of education and you have to rebuild it and put it in. So I think that's why we've been more hands-on than we ever would be. I think if, or Dr. Leclerc thinks of last year, she had a lot less input from us and could probably breathe a lot more. But these are crazy times, so.
So we'll make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
All right, I'll vote.
Remember the order.
Maren?
Confuse the order.
I did confuse the order because y'all shifted on my page. What do you want me to do?
Lori Garcia, buenas noches, adios.
Karen Dunham, good night.
Jonathan Schmidt, bye.
Maren Goldstein, good night. Celine.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye, and good night. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Cynthia Krasinski, aye, and have a great night and a wonderful weekend and thank you all. Bye.
Thank you.